Okay, let's call this meeting to order. We've got some speakers on non-agenda items. I'll call you up now. Timothy Hollinger, Terry Bercasio, Tina Chin, Ryan Floco, Mary Laupa, and Evelyn Torres.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and esteemed colleagues. My name is Tina Chin and I have eighteen years working in the field of education. Prior to coming to San Diego Unified, I was the Assistant Principal in the Grossmont District, and before that, I was an English teacher, ASB Director in the Poway District. Looking in from the outside, I just could not believe that a district, San Diego Unified, could have such vision and passion for children that they would create a program like the Balboa Park 5th Grade Program. I came to this district singularly to work at the Balboa Park Program, and I've never regretted a single minute. I'm extremely proud of this district and the work that we all do together. These past seven years, I've had the privilege of being the program administrator in the Balboa Park 5th Grade Program, and each year, I've seen the program grow and develop and positively impact the lives of the teachers as well as the students who participate. Each passing year sees a new and more terrifying budget crisis, and each year, this board has held fast to its dedication to the Balboa Park Program. For years now, educators have known that the Balboa Park Program increases the efficacy of students, which positively impacts student learning. We at the program, and I speak only for myself and my program in the park, we have heard you say loud and clear that you wished, as a board, you could see hard quantitative data that validates the learning that happens in the park. We in the park have paid attention to what you've been asking for. Today, Julie Kendrick Lawrence and I have that data to share with you. As an aside, I just want to mention that Julie and I have wanted to share this data with you long before we knew that today's agenda would address further budget cuts. We wanted to provide you the best research we could to provide basis for your decisions, and Julie will be more than happy to provide you details on that research. There are just four points I'd like to bring to your attention. First of all, the data. The data speaks to the efficacy of the program. Furthermore, the San Diego Foundation has given us a $25,000 grant to continue this research. Point number two, money. Our wonderful partners in the park, the museums and the institutions, allocate over $835,700 in services and kind to our children. Point number three, money. John Lee Evans has declared this to be the year of the volunteer. Hooray for volunteers. In Balboa Park, 119 volunteers dedicated 1,888.5 hours to the program. If we use the Department of Labor's formula, that one volunteer hour equals $23.29, this translates into $43,983.16. And point number four, money. This year, the fleet provided 52 hours of science professional growth for 170 teachers, all free of charge, all without having to hire substitutes. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, if you could fill out a speaker slip. Go ahead and then fill.
Absolutely. I apologize. I did fill out a speaker slip, and I'll follow Tina as quickly as possible. Hello and good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Julie Kendrick Lawrence. I've worked as a professional museum educator for the past nine years and have been in Balboa Park for the last six. I'm a student in the Joint Doctoral Program in Education at Claremont Graduate University and San Diego State, and I'm a published researcher in the field of museum education, documenting the efficacy of the museum in K-12 intersection. Throughout the past five months, I've volunteered my time to conduct a formal evaluation of the Balboa Park Program. So today will just be a summary of what we found, and again, I thank you for your attention. The purpose of the study was to examine students' attitudes and conceptual understanding of diversity, as well as the perceived value of the Balboa Park Program to teachers. We used a mixed method approach, and the data showed significant differences on a post-test measure of ethnic identity development compared to a control group. Significant differences in conceptual understanding and valuing of diversity within groups visiting the park. Furthermore, through a qualitative analysis of 204 written homework assignments completed by the participating students, a theme of self-actualization emerged. Students began to identify ways in which they discriminate against others, and some expressed a desire to change. Allow me to provide some examples. These are student voices. When I went to Balboa Park the first day, I didn't really consider the fact that I have discriminated before. I met a lot of new friends because I didn't prejudice them. At Balboa Park, I learned about bystanders, advocates, culprits, and victims. When I look around my school, I see people playing their roles. I feel as though I learned a lot about myself and my world. I learned about my identity. I learned who I am, what I do as a person, and what makes me who I am. I learned how to interact with people by asking them words to describe me. I realize how much you can hurt people with words. I feel like this program has taught me many lifelong lessons. Considered together, what this data strongly suggests is that students are walking away from the program, transformed in positive ways. We know from other studies in the literature that when we ensure social integration by providing high-quality inquiry-based instruction, this can have profound effect on students' academic learning. Furthermore, we received valuable feedback from the teachers who participated in focus group interviews, and three major findings emerged. One, teachers developed a relationship with students that were built on trust. There was a sense of self-efficacy in their practices that increased, and we found there's significant potential for the Balboa Park Program to serve as a model professional development site. On the matter of professional development, this is an area that I feel deserves critical attention. There are highly qualified museum educators in the park who lead professional development seminars for teachers in the public school system. Just this semester, more than 170 teachers who participated in the Balboa Park Program also attended professional development at the Fleet Science Center during their time there. In the afternoons, they convened for two and a half hours and participated in highly engaging and ready-to-implement training on process skills. The teachers were energized as they told us about their experience. I'd just like to conclude by saying that it is -- it's an understatement that these are challenging economic times, but I'd like for you to consider the commitment that the museums in Balboa Park have made. As Tina notified you earlier, there is nearly $900,000 contributed in services to this program from the museums and institutions, and nearly 2,000 volunteer hours. Both the data reported here and the systemic endorsement by the museums and their staff paint a comprehensive picture of support for the program. Please keep this in mind as you move forward, and I, all of us, respect your difficult decisions that you undertake and the painful choices you have to make to put children first. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try again. Timothy Hollinger, Terry Bercasio, Ryan Floco, Mary Laupa, or Evelyn Torres. Nope. Okay. Do we have the -- is the JROTC here? No. Where did you go? No. Don't see them outside. Okay, well, we should probably just stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the June 8, 2010 regular meeting to order with all board members present. The board welcomes your comments in writing or during public testimony. Public testimony request forms are located on the tables to my right inside the front and back entrances to the auditorium. The board asks that speakers focus their comments and issues and not on issues and not on individuals. Acceptance of public testimony requests will be closed as each agenda item is called and our discussion begins. Board members and the superintendent are interested in your comments, and staff will be responding to the issues we hear today. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 2:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. And then, due to the change in the board meeting's starting time, our student presentation will be postponed to the next regular board meeting on June 22. We'll begin with item C, a report of closed session actions and the superintendent's information report. Superintendent Koba.
Thank you, President Carrera. Do not have any assignments to announce at this point in time, so I will proceed with the information report for the board and the community as a whole. I have five items I wanted to touch on very briefly. One good news story that came out in the last week is Heart of America is an organization working with Target Retail Firm to overhaul, rebuild, re-energize libraries, and libraries are special to me, and it was good to see that we received a 2010 Target Library Makeover Award for Miller Elementary. Third graders there did a lot of good work to sell their program, and so we're going to get this facelift. And in addition, there was some close competition, two other elementary schools, Angier and Walker, were finalists in this, and they'll receive a $2,000 book award while Miller gets the major change-out, so I'm very pleased for us in that regard. We spent a lot of time in the last ten days working on the new management structure, specifically the area superintendent selection process, and continue to work that, hopefully, to closure here with your collaboration, so I'll move on. The next item I'd like to bring up is school visits. This past week, I happened to be in the northern part of the district and went up to Hage Elementary, toured the campus with Principal Eric Takashita. They're clearly very focused on finishing the school year, doing very well in that regard. As usual, they tried to test me, so I went into a third grade classroom and failed again. They did a promethium science test with crustacean and other science issues, and they proved they're smarter than me again. Went into a fourth grade, same school, and this coming week, Hage is going to be doing a celebration of Old California, so there's a lot of social studies emphasis, and listened and watched as they were exercising, practicing for their roles, both in singing and in knowledge issues for that, and again, kids are well on track and ready to go a week ahead of time. Two other quick items. I did have the opportunity to go to the quarterly meeting of the School Business Executives of Southern California. This is a four-county forum where I participate along with senior officials from Los Angeles, Orange, and Riverside Counties, and we had speakers from both School Services of California and the California Association of School Business Officials talk in particular about the May revise, what follows with regards to an adopted budget. Quite frankly, there are so many cross or mixed tea leaves that neither of these two experts or insiders from Sacramento could talk a whole lot about when they think there will be an adopted budget. They do have some concerns that the cuts to K-12 may not be over. One of the items they brought up is the governor's January budget was based on a $6 billion-plus assumption of federal funding, and the federal government is now balking a little bit at that, or at least a billion dollars plus. Not certain, because of all the uncertainty in Sacramento, whether or not that automatically goes into another K-12 or K-14, '16 education cut, more to follow. There was some encouraging discussion about the Senate and Assembly and the kind of strategies that are developing for mitigating some of the cost of education, but no promises, no guarantees there either. And the last thing, I just want to update the board that this past Monday, yesterday, the cabinet had its third Race Human Relations Training Session. We've been building a sequence here focusing on cultural proficiency, the moral purposes of schools, and issues like that. I think there have been very thoughtful and thought-provoking conversations. We've learned a lot about ourselves as cabinet members, as well as understanding the goals of the district and the realm of race human relations and diversity. So the next session would be sometime in the midsummer. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Koba. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda? Please vote. Okay, informational reports. Mrs. Nakamura.
Yeah. I want to echo what Mr. Koba was saying about the Target. They were very generous. I actually attended that and was present for the beginning of the library makeover, and it was amazing. It was, you know, I've done remodeling. I tried to assure them I could do this really well for them, but the teachers and the students seemed intent on doing it themselves, so that was absolutely -- and they really did. They had all kinds of ideas and discussed it, and it's going to be pretty remarkable when it's completed, so I'm happy with that. Just a shout-out also for our California Distinguished Schools, the four in my district, my sub-district, Jones Elementary, EBS Elementary, Foster Elementary, and Vista Grande. Those four elementary schools, everybody for all of our California Distinguished Schools went up to Disneyland this last week, and I think all of them deserve recognition. We've got quite a number of them in San Diego schools, and it's important that they all be recognized. But yesterday, I was invited to attend something that was really very special, and in fact, it was so special, I asked our Communications Department if they would give us a snippet of or get permission to use the newscast of what had occurred. We have a student at Henry High School over in San Carlos who is facing a life-threatening challenge, and the Make-A-Wish Foundation came forward and offered to support for this student, and this student was rather remarkable. Now, I always talk about the eastern side of the district as the hot, dry, hard-working taxpayer side of the district, and I mean that very sincerely in the sense that they are very self-effacing, and this kid, in the 25-year history of Make-A-Wish Foundation, only two people have asked for something for someone other than themselves, and Darren is one of them. So if you would please watch this, it's really, I think he exemplifies his community, exemplifies the values that he's learned at home and his family, and it's very touching. So if we can get that started.
Now, thanks to one of very special students at the Make-A-Wish Foundation, the football teams at Patrick Henry High School will soon be hitting the field in style. It was a moment 14-year-old Darren James didn't see coming.
I had no idea what was going to happen today.
The moment when his biggest wish.
Darren wanted to provide football to the former Soren's High School team.
Came true.
Darren said, "You bet. We'll take care of Darren. Make this wish happen."
A different player for the freshman team at Patrick Henry High School last fall. In January, he was dying of those with non-hodgies leukemia. When he started losing his hair, the entire team, even the coaches shaved their heads.
The freshman coach, Billy Wood, had provided philosophy to the boys where he's building the community, men for others, and doing that, Darren really took that part, and has absorbed it.
They're giving so much, they're giving me so much hope, and to conquer this, I have to give back.
To get through every single day with a child with cancer is very draining, but our community has made it possible for our family to do it.
And according to the football team's blog, recent scan revealed that Darren's body was cancer-free, but he still has to undergo a few chemotherapy sessions this Saturday. A blood drive will be held in his name. For the time and location, you can log on to tindies.com and click on the red TV button.
And I'd like to announce that blood drive's going to be at the San Carlos Recreation Center on Saturday, so if you'd like to join. But we also need to thank not only Make-A-Wish Foundation, which doesn't simply supply all of this money, but the Nike Corporation is providing team uniforms for the team. I mean, they're extremely generous for all levels, freshman team, the junior varsity, and the varsity team. In addition, it's going to be home uniforms and away uniforms, so Nike's being especially generous in their support of this, but I think it just, the fact that this young man chose something for his community and for everyone else is worth noting. So thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you, Mrs. Nakamura. And Ms. Dr. Evans?
Well, yesterday was the last day of my tutoring sessions for our Power Up Volunteer Reading Program. I was at Whitman Elementary with Mikel in third grade and Ruben in fourth grade, and I've been meeting with him for the last six weeks, working on their reading with them, and I hope that a lot more people can get involved in this next year. This individual attention to kids' reading is really important. I know it's very difficult for people to do when they're very busy. I know I had to take off from my day job and get over there at lunchtime and meet with each of them for a little while every Monday, but I think it's a very valuable program that we've gotten started. And just in general, going out to the schools, I just want to commend all of the teachers, all the principals, all of the custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, everybody who has been working very hard. We're constantly up here talking about the budget crisis and how we're going to fund this and how we're going to fund that, and while all of this uncertainty is going on, we have a lot of very dedicated people who are continuing to work very hard and serving these kids under very trying circumstances, so I just want to let all of them know that we really, really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
I had an interesting week last week. I spent some time with Crawford and VAS, and they had a morning where they had a community outreach, and I had a chance to speak with several groups of students. It was very interesting because they shared some of their concerns, includes lunch, as it usually does. They talked about the district leadership and had lots of questions. But the next day, I was at Lewis for the reading, and I go there every year, and I was impressed at the amount of volunteers that did come. But at Lewis, and Crawford both, they asked a lot of interesting questions. One of the questions that was asked of me was, "In my previous job, what did I learn to help me in this current job?" And it was great because what I said was, "In being a teacher, one thing about students, students don't have any boundaries yet, so when you ask them a question, they're able to just give you lots of different answers." I said, "Versus adults, we tend to think within our world," and I said, "That's one of the things that hopefully we can spread more adults to think outside the box rather than inside." Also, this week, we had a Golden Pyramid at Balboa Park. We had several hundred students receiving medallions. Mr. Carrera was there with me, so that was a wonderful event. And then, the retired teachers had their annual reception this week as well, and that was nice. We had at least two people there, only two joining the ranks. They have more, but only two came to the event. But I do want to echo Dr. Evans' comments and to our staff, especially the people that are doing the day-to-day work at the district, the principals, bus drivers, teachers, the entire staff, that while we are wrestling with this, they are carrying on, making sure that, I know last night, they were still doing their testing, that it's all still going on, and they're not being distracted by all of the differences we have here on the dais, and I want to appreciate them for that particular effort.
Thanks, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Debat?
I'll pass.
Okay. Yeah, I want to just echo Dr. Evans and Ms. Jackson's appreciation for all the work that's going on throughout our district, at our schools, directly with our students. And I also want to, you know, we're going to have a number of difficult decisions in front of us today, tonight, and over the next couple of weeks, but I really want to acknowledge and appreciate the extraordinary work that our staff here in the district under the leadership of Superintendent Koba have been doing, working nonstop through the weekends, you know, over the last several weeks, just helping to identify ways that we can try to make it through this crisis, and it's been extraordinary work, and I very much appreciate it. Okay, let's move on. We need a motion to accept the revised schedule.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Great. And can we get a motion to accept modified bylaws for the Prop S, I-C-O-C?
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, thank you. Oh. Did that?
Can you please vote?
Yeah, can we please vote again? I'm sorry. Okay, terrific. And thank you to the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee and Stuart Markey for working on modifying the bylaws. Okay, on to item F5. This is a first reading, not an action item, and this is the adoption of resolutions in the matter of eliminating classified vacant positions.
This is, as you were noting, President Carrera, a proposal to eliminate positions with regards to balancing the budget in order to make requirements with recognition that we do have an ongoing board-directed hiring freeze and the intent of restoration. In fact, I've already directed Mr. Reinderson to create the restoration resolution that the board would adopt at a later date in time, but this is in fact just a first reading.
Okay, board members. Ms. Jackson?
Yeah. Just a couple of comments, and I'd like to have further information on the following items, please. These pages aren't numbered, but this is for the OSS bargaining unit, and I'm looking at custodial services for the schools listed there. I'd like to have more information as to how many custodians will be left, if the school can be maintained with losing that personnel. On the next, on the Paris page, item, we have at Oak Park Elementary, a music instructor. We have raised two Race Human Relations positions. I'd like to know what the impact of those positions are going to be to those organizations. And at school services office, police services, we have several schools that are losing their CSOs, and I was under the impression that we were able to make those adjustments without having to reduce the CFO, so I need to know what their plan is going to be for security at these particular school sites. Those are my questions for those items. Thank you.
Ms. Debat?
I've looked over these, and I have a real concern about all of them, but the main issue for me is, and I mentioned it last time, and I'll kind of summarize it. If you have an organization that's designed around delivery of a certain set of services, and you want to recognize that organization, you may not fill positions in that organization, but you don't abolish them. So my take on this is, while I understand some positions are up for cut, I would say that I honestly believe that they're not up for cut for lack of need of the work. And last week, I raised the issue about whether or not it was legal for us to show in the budget a contra account that shows positions that are unfilled as a frozen item, and I have checked that, and the answers I got from the county was, "It's not recommended, but possible, and it's not a violation of the state accounting code." That's contrary to the information I got from our staff last week. And before we act, I want to know, because I have not found, and I could not find, that no one in the county could show me any reference to this fact, that it's not legal for us to show unfilled, frozen positions in our budget. And here's the example. If you have over here a cost which is of all the budgeted positions, and it's a negative item below it for the positions that are unfilled that require board action, what's the difference between that and the risk, which is throwing out the positions by eliminating them and then coming back and saying, "We need to reinstate positions in order to accomplish our mission"? You know, for me, the number, the net number's the same. You have a fully budgeted staff, but you admit that you can't fill it, okay? And the net result is the same number at the bottom of the balance sheet, but the argument is, that I heard, was you can't do that. Well, I'm not convinced. But anyway, my point on this is, if this district feels it needs to reorganize, then that should be the next step after, you know, freezing the positions. that should be the next step after, you know, freezing the positions. Because if you say, okay, we're going to be able to do this more efficiently, we know we can do it with less money, and we can reorganize it and show it as, we're going to be able to do this with less money, then bring me a reorganization before you do away with the old ones, okay? That's my take on this, you know, and I think it's, I think most of the history of this has been that some of these jobs have not come back with the same names, but they were the same duties, and the people in the units had a right to be concerned because they weren't even considered for the new jobs, even though their duties were different, because the jobs that they were just done away with were their jobs, and the new job had a new name. Okay? So I'm not thrilled about the idea of just saying, okay, we'll balance our budget by doing away with positions when the rationale is you can't afford them. I understand that rationale. I can't afford them, and I won't fill them, but that doesn't mean I'm going to do away with the jobs because I think they're essential. And if you had enough of these shown, then you show the community that you have needs that you have already organized around and that you're not able to fill because the state has not funded your positions. I can live with that, but I can't live with abolishing positions.
Mr. Koba?
We will go back and verify with the county. The information we had was that the elimination was the appropriate process, but if John had differing information, we need to verify that. And I would go whatever is appropriate, as long as we can't and do not fill the positions, and it's not because they're not needed, they're not essential. They're all needed, but we can't afford them. So we'll go with the right process.
Well, see, the problem is, there's no definitive answer from the county. The same person you asked was the same person I asked, and the answer is, they couldn't find proof that I was wrong, but they said it's not normal, and they didn't think that our staff had the capability of doing it because they didn't understand the state accounting code that well, okay? And I'm not going to quote the person because I think that's unfair. But that's, the point was, PeopleSoft doesn't have a place in it for doing this, therefore we just got to cut the positions to make it work. Well, what accounting I know shows that there is definitely, and I've had more than one course in it and taught it, shows that contra accounts are still a legitimate way of doing accounting. So I'll just go with that. But I'm not happy with a person saying you can't do it when I can go find out it's possible, even though it's not recommended, okay?
I would concur with Mr. DeBeck about the need for these positions. The board's action really was set up that if we didn't have money to pay for certain things, if we didn't have money in our pocket to pay for it, we couldn't buy certain positions. But that did not eliminate the need for them. We just didn't have the money to pay for them, which is why we went through the process of freezing the hiring with the positions sitting there ready as soon as we had the money. And the only reason that we have been considering this procedure in terms of eliminating the positions on paper was because of the supposed requirement from the county that they would not accept that as a balanced budget if we listed unfilled vacant positions that were frozen, that they wouldn't accept that as legitimate. But I just appreciate the fact that the staff is checking into that, and I think that's pretty clear that that's the intent of the board, is that we do need these positions, we just don't have the money.
And I want the citation in the counting code.
Yes, Ms. Martin.
Yeah, I agree that we need to get to the bottom of this, but I do it again, remind, you know, the board, as we're all painfully aware, that, you know, we're trying to balance the budget and trying to find answers, you know, what we are trying to do is save money. And, you know, I think we need to get to the bottom of this. If it's available, if we can keep these positions, that's fine, but if it's not, I hope that, you know, we'll find a way to do what's right for our students and for our teachers, this money absolutely, and for the rest of our staff, quite frankly. We're up against a wall, and if we keep finding everything unpalatable, pretty soon we're going to be in a harder place than we are right now, so.
There's two aspects of this issue that I'm looking at. One is just the simple accounting process. And, you know, if, in order to realize savings in our budget, we need to eliminate vacant positions that we otherwise would not intend to fill because we can't afford to fill them, then I'm prepared, even though I don't want to, I'm prepared to go ahead and vote to eliminate the vacant positions. But if, you know, there is leeway there, which Mr. DeBeck is suggesting, and Mr. Koba will verify, then I'd certainly prefer that we not eliminate the positions. So it's really, it's really this basic question of, will the budget savings be recognized if we don't eliminate the vacant positions? The second aspect of this, though, and this is why, you know, I keep pushing that we make sure we have this conversation with the different bargaining units, is because of some of the testimony that we heard Thursday night, which was, a position is vacant because a couple of weeks ago, somebody left the position. So it hasn't been vacant all year at the time that we put our hiring freeze into effect. It recently became vacant, but obviously, the expectation was that we would need to fill it. So the whole question of, we know all of these positions are important, some are critical, and I think it's important that the people who do the work every day, who are closest to the work, have some voice in letting us know what positions are critical and what aren't. So, again, what I'm going to need to hear before I'm prepared to vote to eliminate positions is, number one, verifying the issue that Mr. DeBeck is raising. Is it, in fact, necessary from an accounting perspective? But number two, are we eliminating positions that are critical and that we need to fill right now, and that should be filled right now? And I think that's a conversation that we have to have with the representatives of the people who actually do this work, day in and day out, a conversation between management and the bargaining units. We've got some public speakers on this item, Ethel Larkins, Lance Wren, and Marsha Baruda.
Good afternoon, President Barrera, board members and Superintendent Koba. As you said, OSS 724. I was here Thursday night. First, I want to say thank you. We did have a meeting on Monday with the district as far as the positions. But my question now is, the number, as I said, keeps changing. We had six, now we're looking at 26, and now looking at actual vacant positions or actual people bodies. So now there's another question, a factor that's in there. You were first talking about vacant positions, now we're talking about eliminating actual people. So I need some clarification on that. As I said, the numbers are changing, and we're cutting to the bone, we're at the bone, and who's going to be left to actually do the work? You know, we're about the children, we're in this together, we're trying to work with you all. We just need to know some answers to some of the questions that were asked on Monday, and so we're asking the board, can we get those answers? Because now it looks like you're talking about bodies, not just, I mean, actual people, not just vacant positions. So the question comes back as, who's going to be left to do the work? You know, started out at six, went to 15, added additional 10 landscapers, you're looking at 25 there, so now it's 31. Numbers, can't get a correct answer on the numbers. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Koba will make sure to follow up. So number one, we are talking in this.
This is a resolution only about vacancies, so we'll validate that. I do know that HR did meet with the individual bargaining units yesterday, and there were some questions and...
And as questions arise from bargaining units...
We'll take them up and research them, but this is just a action on vacancies and should be nothing else.
Okay, thank you.
Lance Wren, CSEA Vice President of Custodial for OSS, and I want to thank you for recognizing that every position is vital. Every position is essential. And I want to really, really do thank you for recognizing that. But even eliminating vacant positions, those are, that would have to, we would have to readjust the whole entire custodial department and create split-side custodians at one site, where a guy works four hours on one side and goes four hours on another side. I've worked for two years to reduce that number down. Eliminating vacant positions would cause more turmoil in the department. In landscaping, you see how good things look now. I mean, things look fantastic in comparison to the way they looked five, six years ago when we had almost no landscapers. It's, we're going back, and we need to go forward with this district, and I know that you guys are under the gun. I know that you are being pressured because Sacramento won't do their job, okay? I was in San Jose last week, and Bill Lockyer came there, came to us and talked to the people for the California Advocates United Save Education. He came and he talked to us, and he said, why aren't you supporting us? I said, but we're not supporting you because you don't support us. When I see my union brothers and sisters being laid off, that's not support. We're not going to walk the streets for you, we're not going to help you get elected if you don't support education, and we're drawing a line in the sand. This is it. No more Sacramento and Arnold doesn't do the right thing. They don't do the right thing. They're not getting our support. You guys are doing the best you can, and we recognize that. But if, what just Mr. DeBeck says, if we don't have to eliminate these vacant positions just because of some rule that the county office of ed says, forget about that. Keep the positions. If state law doesn't say you have to vac, you have to get rid of those vacant positions, don't do it. Keep the positions. When the money comes back, and we change the attitude in Sacramento, we can fill those positions with real bodies, families, San Diegans. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Marsha Baruda. I live at 4124 Campus Avenue, Apartment 3, and I'm really here as a concerned member of the community, really to bear witness to a sad day, to see once again the fact that you have to consider cuts in education. It's the wrong direction, you know that. It's the wrong direction for our country, it's the wrong direction for our community, it's the wrong direction for a better future. We're talking about eliminating jobs. That is the wrong direction for our country right now. We need to be talking about creating jobs, not eliminating jobs. Right now, the United States Senate has failed to act on extending unemployment benefits to people who have already lost most of their benefits. This is a big concern for our community as well, but the Senate is saying that they're concerned about deficits. I would say that what we need now is, we need education for our children, we need jobs for our community, we need to be concerned about the well-being of people in our communities right now. And to coin an old Star Trek phrase, resistance is not futile, and I would go with Lance. Resist as much as you can to back education and jobs for our community. Thank you.
Yes, John.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, well, I'm unable to go through all the different jobs and all this, all this stuff, but I'm going to give an illustration that I think is important for people to understand. When we make judgments, this is the kind of stuff that can happen. We have a group of, and this is for the Paris, because I don't know if people talk for them much. But in special education, we have, for example, I'll call it medically fragile kids, we have kids that have special attention required for them, where there is a paraprofessional who, for example, has a responsibility of making sure that the kid's sanitary and clean, change their diapers. There might be somebody else who would handle their feeding through a feeding tube. And if we did away with those people, the result would be this. We'd have a teacher who makes 90 bucks an hour or so changing diapers, or we'd have a teacher making 90 bucks an hour or so feeding a kid. But there are people who can do that work that are not paid the same as teachers. And when we talk about how we organize our school district, we can't just think about teacher jobs, we've got to think about the delivery system for the benefit of the children. And so every time that I say, okay, I save a teacher's job and I lose a classified job, I think about this very thing I just described. Why is it that the kids' needs are likely to be met in a higher-cost way? Because we thought we were saving some jobs. It's not altogether appropriate. We have to think about the whole delivery system, especially in special ed, but there are other areas as well. I mean, can a instructional job for a teacher be made more efficient by a paraprofessional that corrects their papers for them while the teacher helps an individual child? Is that smart? I think it is. But see, when we just say, you know, a certain class of job is more valuable than another, we're making big mistakes. And I can't change all that from here, but that's important part of what I think. And so when I see these kinds of cuts, I want to know how, yeah, just like they say, who will do the work? That's what you're saying, and it's what I'm saying, but I may be saying it a different way because of my experience in the classroom. But that's important. You've got to value each other's jobs, just not one class of jobs in a school district, and I think that's a danger that we're falling into. Thank you.
Okay, well, this was a first reading, not an action item, so if there's no further discussion, we'll move on. Okay, thanks. Let's move on to item F6. This is a resolution that I'm introducing in support of the Assembly Speaker's California Jobs Budget Plan.
Who's approval? Second target, or whatever.
Motion in a second. And I'll just very quickly comment, you know, this is not necessarily the only way to balance the budget, and it's not, in the end, likely to be the way to balance the budget. I think what's important about this is, it clarifies the fact that it is entirely, it is entirely possible to balance this budget in Sacramento without making the kind of cuts to education that we've seen, proposed for next year, and that we've had to experience over the last couple of years. It's entirely possible to do it, and like Lance Wren talked about, I think it's important that we send that message very clearly to the governor and to the legislators in Sacramento, that our expectation is that you will balance your budget without further cuts to public education, and that's why I'm introducing this matter. So we've got a motion in a second, please vote. Okay, passes 5-0. Thanks. Okay, item F7, can we get a motion to excuse a board member?
So moved. Second. Please vote. You get to vote.
Okay, you can vote.
A second. Yeah, you can.
Okay, and item 8 is an information item, not an action item. Ms. Jackson?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Item 8, that is requesting that the staff look at providing transportation to the students in their re-life program. I think that there are already buses that are going from Morris to Sierra on a regular daily basis, and just being, allowing those students to ride the buses from Morris to Sierra, and then providing transportation across from Sierra to the IBW Training Center on a small van. I'm not quite sure what that will look like, but I wanted the staff to look into that. Okay? All right.
So we'll take an action and take a look at what our options are and what costs or impacts there are.
Okay, it shouldn't be very much, probably less than $30,000, I just didn't know. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a speaker on this item, Sally Smith. Sally's not here? Okay, great, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, let's move on to item G1. This is the Monitoring and Accountability Compliance Organizational Structure. Mr. Koba?
Thank you, President Barrera. This is a follow-up from a workshop of about two weeks ago. You had had some questions and wanted us to do some further examination, and I asked Dr. Joe Fultcher, who was one of our co-chairs, to do that research work. He provided some input to you, and I'd like to ask Joe to come forward and simply give you a highlight and be prepared to answer some questions.
Going to be referring to your MAC committee report that's in your packets, and then give some background information so we can track how we got to this point. On April 20th, during a discussion with Superintendent Koba about the organization and management structure of the district, board members requested greater clarity on the composition and responsibilities of the proposed MAC office. The board also suggested that consideration be given to the role and roles of the Research and Evaluation Division and its possible intersection with IT. Subsequently, a MAC committee was commissioned, and during the initial report of the findings, the board requested additional information on budget and fiscal matters, potential savings as a result of consolidated services, MAC leadership structure, and directed staff to eliminate two of the six proposed departments from the new MAC to eliminate two of the six proposed departments from the new MAC organization. And MAC is Monitoring, Accountability, and Compliance. This report will provide a brief update of the responses to the board's request. Please also recall that the MAC Office was conceptualized as facilitating or to facilitate a culture of accountability and continuous improvement in both educational programs and business operations that would foster student achievement and positive learning experiences for all students. Some of the functions include, and I won't go through them all, coordinating the administration of standardized examinations, analysis of student assessment data, program evaluation, oversight and monitoring of state and federal entitlement programs, grants, review of monitor, review and monitoring of school improvement efforts, reporting on the performance of schools and district support function, and many others. Now, the scope of the MAC Office is fairly wide. It has access to every other department in this district. The MAC Office will also be responsible for monitoring the accountability plans of those departments. And the bottom line is that this department wants to ensure that teachers, staff, schools, and others who work in our organization are preparing our students for a premium education and a successful life. As mentioned earlier, the board suggested the elimination of two of the four departments. Those two departments were Strategic Planning and the School Innovations Department. In the proposed 2010-2011 budget for Monitoring, Accountability, and Compliance, you can see that, it's shown on page three of your packet. Should be noted that the proposed budget reflects a decrease from the combined 2009-2010 Research and Evaluation Division and the Federal and Special Programs Division in the amount of $3.8 million. It includes reductions taken via BRACE, priority-based budgeting, as well as the 2% that the central office engaged in some time ago. Now, for consistency, the comparison does not include the board-approved departments that were removed from the Federal and Special Programs Division. Parent involvement's one, early childhood is the next one, and then Title I SES and NCLB private school services. So again, the, that budget or the planned budget is listed on page three of your packet. There are no new costs associated with the MAC Office. The established positions and operating budgets in the current federal and special projects and Research and Evaluation Divisions are sufficient to support this office. The cost center numbers will likely remain the same, especially for two of those listed departments. And the staff that support the current federal and special programs, as well as the RED or Research and Development, Research and Evaluation Division, will remain to provide administrative and operational support. Appendix three, also in your packet, offers a financial comparison of the 2009-2010 federal and special programs and the Research and Evaluation Division. Now, the combined funding to sustain both divisions during this current fiscal year was $26.8 million. Now, a total of, a total adjusted budget for the three removed departments, again for the '09-10 fiscal year, was $16.8 million. And the planned cost for those same three departments for the next school year is about $15.5 million. Those, again, are the three departments that have been removed from federal and special programs. Now, Mrs. Nakamura also suggested at that last meeting that we take a look at a few districts to find out more about their accountability offices. She specifically mentioned San Francisco Unified and Garden Grove. And this helped us in determining the scope and breadth of this new MAC Office. So we looked at, we had, undertook a very ambitious review of MAC-like departments throughout the nation. Some of the districts included Austin, St. Paul, Charlotte, Los Angeles Unified, Fresno, San Francisco, Garden Grove, and many others. And you can find them in your appendix as well. Common features of the reviewed districts included an emphasis on data-driven decisions, accountability, research, and evaluation functions, monitoring and developing key performance indicators, use of a data dashboard, state and federal accountability duties, program evaluation, and a focus on school improvement and student achievement. You can also find in Appendix three, an overview of accountability and monitoring departments in the select districts. And what I did is I highlighted Los Angeles Unified, San Francisco Unified, and Clark County. Garden Grove didn't have a suitable department to review. They didn't have an accountability or a similar department in their district. So that nullified the information I got from Garden Grove. Again, the recommendation based on everything we've suggested is for the board to approve the new MAC Office. There, of course, will be some job descriptions that need to be written or developed in relationship to the duties associated with carrying out the responsibilities of this, of this office. The four departments that we are suggesting to go move forward with, and I have Dr. Brenda Campbell and Mr. Ron Rody to answer any questions about, on the specifics rather, of these departments. But we're looking at performance management and evaluation, monitoring and accountability reporting, assessment services, research and reporting. Some of those departments sound very similar to departments that currently exist. What's different is the scope. We've changed the scope of those departments and the responsibilities inherent in carrying out the duties. So with that, I'll stop and entertain any questions.
We've got a couple of public speakers if we can do that and then go to questions. Mr. Fultcher, Francine Maxwell and David Page.
Board members, my name is David Page. I'm the District Advisory Council chairperson for compensatory education, and so that's how I come to know a little bit about compensatory education that we're modifying here. One of the first things that I want to mention again, that I've told you before, is that the system we had in place was not broken, that the school district has done well on the monitoring side to not be investigated by the state as they were choosing districts throughout the state in the cycle. The district was left alone. That sets the thing about something not being broken. But what does bother me is at our last meeting, somebody said, "Take planning out." Does this document we have now indicate where planning landed? You're going to be telling us in the next agenda items that you're going to modify the LAA plan. Where does that land? Who's doing that? Whose responsibility is that? I'm concerned about the lack of coordination or leadership if you're moving these things about in different departments where job descriptions don't require knowledge of compensatory education or the ability to coordinate or to know when things are supposed to even happen so that the monitoring office is then walking around the district telling them, "Hey, you should have done this. Hey, you should have done that." To break this up really doesn't make much sense. The other thing is, is that in our last discussions about budgets, we were talking about looking for $5 million in the central office. And curious to me, the Appendix 1B that shows the overall district structure doesn't indicate the positions that are responsible. For instance, Integrated Technology Support Services. It doesn't say chief. There's a chief there. There's a chief, of course, with the finance. There's a chief with district relations. There's a chief with special projects. There's a chief with legislation who has one employee. This document also doesn't show the scope and size of these departments where you have chiefs of. But what you'll notice throughout this document is that the former state and federal programs office was huge and managed by an executive director. And I'm saying that the standard is that it could be managed by an executive director. So could integrated technology. So could district relations. And so could special projects. Unless you try and disperse these things and give them more work to do, is the purpose of this to supplant their budgets by having Title I employees under them that they can use under administrative costs? I'll be looking for that. But I'm curious why that's happening. But bigger than this is to understand why all along such a large department did not have a chief whenever everybody else did as far as positions. I'm not suggesting you do that, but if you're going to cut costs, cut the chiefs to executive directors and look closely at the size of their structures and compare them. You have district procedures that require that. So I'm not sure how you can make a decision about titles and positions without having a comment from human relations telling you what those standards are for scope and work and position titles. But my biggest concern really has to do with how are we going to handle planning in this situation? That the DAC doesn't want to find out at the last minute, "Oh, we didn't consider it. We're not sure where it comes from." To leave this to a deputy superintendent of something doesn't mean that that individual is hired with the capacity to understand what goes on in compensatory education. And it wasn't broken because all conversations happened within. And I'd yet to understand how this is going to be more efficient from the standpoint of logical outcome of planning and accountability.
Francine Maxwell, parent of a senior at Morris and a sophomore at Lincoln. I'm concerned with this because of the lack of where I can identify the monitoring that's going to come from. Being that we're concerned with no child left behind, we're having whole schools left behind because the dates are being missed, knowledge, the lack of knowledge of some of the district staff on how to prepare parents, how to ask the questions, what to look for in making sure that the monies at your school that have been allotted are spent correctly. So I'm a little bit concerned when I look over this graph where certain individuals are going to fall. With the fact that Title I money was mentioned, I'm real concerned because as I looked on some paperwork, that may come later tonight, but looking at grad coaches and counselors, I have a real problem with that because you have head counselors on some of these campuses now that don't even have a caseload. So for them to get paid out of Title I is confusing to me. But I would just like the board to take a look at and slow down just a little bit because as a parent, I don't have a bargaining unit. I don't have a unit so that we can meet and discuss what the parents are lacking. So if you could just think of us, we need someone that I can hold accountable directly through the chain of command before I have to go to Mr. Koba. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
I looked at this plan and certainly things have changed since we started the MAC discussion. And what I did, and because we do need to save money, so I'll pass these down, is I think I've kind of reorganized it just a little bit differently. And I'm just asking that as board members tonight, we reconsider how we roll this department out. First of all, the graph is up there and what I essentially did was I took away the ED position. I combined the monitoring and accountability and the performance management into one position. And then the people under those, we combined those two, which eliminated some of the administrative and research that we had duplicated on the other side. And I put that particular director under the deputy superintendent of academics. We talk about accountability and people should be held accountable. And we have, we don't, we had that chart on a different, but under that particular job description, I would like to put the Director of Performance Management and Evaluation and Accountability because that person will be actually overseeing that particular endeavor in the single-site plans. For the business side, the business superintendent, I put the Director of Assessment Services, Research and Reporting. And I combined those two on the right-hand side, the Director of Assessment and the Director of Research and Reporting, and combined those left, those right two lanes to the ones that you have listed there. This saves an additional $1.5 million in personnel costs, but it also provides us with the oversight for these programs that we need. I do, I do agree that we, we need to have, we need to hold people accountable. And I'm not sure putting out separately by themselves is the way to do it. I think we hold people accountable by making sure the person that's over them is responsible. So, but what this does, and the second page of this kind of breaks that down a little bit, and when you look on the far right-hand side, the very top, it has said, on the previous chart, we had 43 positions. This one has 30, and then there's a savings of 13 for $1.5 million in all of these job descriptions there. The last page of this just shows how these people, where the allocation for these monies are coming from. But I think because things have changed since we started looking at this department, we need to look at it differently and try to save as much money as we can and be efficient as we can. And I want to thank the staff for working with me to put this together. Thank you.
Mr. DeBeck?
Yes. Well, first of all, I want to thank Joe and the team for the report. And I also want to respond to David, you know, on his comments about not broken. Somehow, it always seems to me a problem when you have the people that are in the program responsible for their own accountability. So I'll just leave that be. I mean, we've had, I think our Title I has been broken in the past, maybe not now with your saying what you say and stuff. But I think there's evidence that we have made mistakes in accountability around Title I with the organization very much like it is. So I want to say this, I do believe in an accountability, you know, and I wanted to be a chief accountability officer because when I saw that follow-up study that was made by Joe, that came out loud and clear that most of these people that had it had a chief accountability officer. Now then, the thing that's missing for me, as I looked at that chart up there, it just stuck out immediately to me was where's the stuff about our internal audit? Isn't internal audit around accountability?
Exactly.
Okay? So, you know, and if we look at the grand jury report, like commending us on some of the stuff we do, the very least we should do is include within our accountability the issue of how we hold people accountable on that arena. So then I say that becomes a director. Okay? Now then, you could argue there's other things that should be included. And then the argument was about planning. Okay? Planning is not about accountability. Accountability is a part of planning. So what you do is if you have planners, and I love to do this stuff, I mean, Sheila just did it too, we'd like to create some plans, but the point is, when you make a plan, you should have somebody that says it doesn't make accountability sense. And so that means you've got to have somebody that when planned, if you want to do a dotted line, you've got this person here underneath the superintendent. I don't see anything wrong with that. I think that's absolutely the best place for it. But the superintendent's responsibility will be all those people that report to him together to talk about accountability with this very person who's a director. It fits a model that I presented long ago, which didn't even have a superintendent in it. But as far as I'm concerned, the more you collect accountability people together, the better off. You might even throw in some legal advice as a part of it, but if you want to separate that from accountability, that's okay too. But I honestly believe that this, this chart with the addition of, you know, the very talented people we have in an internal audit would make sense as it stands if the title was changed to, you know, I'll call it a title that makes sense to me, which is Chief Accountability Officer. I don't like MAC at all. Monitoring? Accountability is monitoring. Compliance? Accountability is compliance. So just call it an accountability, you know, Chief Accountability Officer and let it be. Now, if you don't want to pay him what he's worth, that's your problem, but I still think the organization has to be right.
Mr. Koba?
I appreciate the comments and the research by Ms. Jackson and Mr. DeBeck as well. We developed this concept based on the board discussion back in April where you wanted a direct report to the superintendent. So that was the road that we were all going down. The school districts that we looked at were either large urbans or California urbans or some combination of the two because you were looking for a standard, a reference point. And I think that in the main, they all were direct reports to the superintendent, albeit I'll certainly acknowledge what John is saying, accountability, chief accountability officer was a more common term than not, and I have no problems with calling this the Accountability Office. I do think that we recognize that planning and innovation were not issues that you wanted to focus on. So that became part of the change between the last workshop and today. I do have some concern about putting the auditing, internal auditor in here. We did recognize that from time to time that this office would need to tap into subject matter expertise throughout the district organization, such as the internal auditor. We do, I think if we looked at the workload of the internal audit staff, it is primarily in money and resource management. It gets into the specifics like ASB and some of the other funding sources. So you ask yourself when you're making decisions about moving functions around, where's the preponderance of their time and attention? So you consider that, but also you consider a reach back. Can we take some expertise when we come across an accountability issue that is best suited by support from internal audits? So you just have to appreciate where is the functional or subject matter expertise used more often than not, but with some connection back. We thought about IT. We thought about facilities. We thought about HR. Because at some point in time, they all may have a need when you get into accountability.
But what, who reports, where does the internal audit report now? To you?
No, they report to council.
Well, they ought to report to you.
So you just have to appreciate where is the functional or subject matter expertise used more often than not, but with some connection back. We thought about IT, we thought about facilities, we thought about HR, because at some point in time, they all may have a need when you get into accountability.
But what, who reports, where does the internal audit report now? To you, right?
No, they report to council.
Well, they ought to report to you.
No.
We're holding you accountable.
But that's my point.
Not the attorney.
Just a second, but that's my point with reorganizing it because what happens is that now, I mean, I know our thought as a board previously, but given the financial crisis that we're in, if we're going to hold people accountable, then, then we need to look at where we can put that accountability piece at. And, and so I think that we cannot afford at this time to start making new departments. I think it's time for us to look and say who is responsible for these particular items and then holding them accountable. Otherwise, we're going to, you have another entity that's sitting over there saying, oh, this person isn't doing their job and how are we going to fix it, whether in it coming up and through that particular person to the superintendent or back down through the superintendent. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, we have had a lot of discussions obviously prior to this about the organization of the accountability type office. And the committee worked very hard on this and we've also been very responsive to what, you know, what the board member considerations have been. One of the things that we did discuss the last time was that this was being set up as a cost neutral change through the combination of different departments, which at first glance is good, but considering the, obviously, the extreme budget situation that we're in, we're always looking for cost savings. And so the first thing when I looked at this and knowing that it was fitting somewhat with what we had been asking for was almost to say if there's this particular budget of $6 million off the top to say we need to, we need to save at least 10% of that, just as an example. And even if that would mean having certain positions again that were not filled, that we considered important but could not fill at this time, I think we need to have a way to bring that down. And I appreciate the fact that Ms. Jackson has worked on this and has come up actually more than the 600,000, more like closer to 1.6 million, and that's, that's good too. I'm not, I can't pass judgment immediately here on the dais in terms of one set of diagrams versus another. I would want the staff to, to go back and, and look at that. Excuse me, but with the basic idea of significant savings. And I know that's the challenge we have for everything, to do, to have an office that can function and do what it's supposed to do, but potentially with, with less money. That would be what I would suggest.
Ms. Snocamore.
I would like to thank staff for listening so carefully to what the board said. We had a long workshop and a lot of discussion, which, you know, our viewing audience was not privileged to hear, didn't have a chance to hear all of that. Mr. Koba, why do we have a monitoring, accountability and compliance department? What do these people accomplish and what do they do?
Well, I think much of it is embedded in state and federal expectations that we would have an oversight program, call it monitoring or accountability, that ensures that we do comply with programs in terms of execution of the mission and the use of the resources that go with the mission. So, and there's a whole reporting process that goes with monitoring and accountability that the state and/or the federal government requires, just as this connection with assessment and reporting has its own set of reports. So I think part of it is embedded in some code or directive. I think another part of it is based on just good business practices to have some amount of internal controls. And that's why internal auditors exist. In addition to having some requirement that they be there, that's also a part of stabilizing the process. External audit in the past has been largely about dollars and resources, independent and separate from federal programs and monitoring, which have been all about programatics in state and federal law. So any good-sized district will have some combination of both.
Now, I'm an attorney, so, you know, I'm always thinking lawsuits and other punitive measures that federal, state, and even citizens can bring against us. Is, as we tinker with this and these job descriptions and all the rest, is there any possibility that we'd be privy to those types of actions?
Well, I think we properly build our organization so that we're aware of, recognize and following all of the different guidances that are out there. And I think we could recognize that federal programs already knows to some degree and has been working with those processes, as has the RED, the research and evaluation. So it'd be a matter of making sure we benchmark or inventory all of those compliant categories and we execute appropriately. I think this combination of the two organizations or some amount of accountability role was based on, we have an opportunity to restructure, we wanted to bring this upfront. I think the board as a consensus is very focused on some accountability is a key issue. We want it properly organized in the new management structure, directly reporting to the superintendent and overseeing all these compliance issues. So that, that was the genesis for why we are discussing this.
Yeah, but if we mess this up or if something goes wrong or whatever, we are subject, right, to...
Oh, I think we're vulnerable.
Well, we have exposure, to use the...
Yes.
...legal term, right? So there's a lot of exposure involved with this. So, you know, this is a particularly important and sensitive area. And this board has a reputation for micromanaging and telling people how they ought to be doing things and how the, you know, where they ought to go. I have no problem with returning and saying that we need to, you know, maybe look at this and reorganize it and scrub the budget and, you know, if it's at all possible. But I don't want to increase our risk of exposure for lawsuits or, you know, someone coming back at us and saying, you know, that we failed in some essential function within the district and getting a fine or something else levied against us. This is a particularly sensitive and important area. So, you know, while we like to micromanage up here, I think we pay all of you, you know, a lot of money for the, the experience and the professional degrees that you hold in this area, you know, doctors in education and whatever it happens to be, you know, and, and our attorneys. So, you know, I don't mind going back and asking the superintendent to be the superintendent and take a look at what can be reorganized and how it can be managed. If there's a possibility that we can save money without significant exposure or risk of vulnerability, I'd be surprised if we have not already done that. But that's setting direction and setting policy, not developing, you know, programs and organizational charts all on our own, no matter who we talk to. You know, this body acts as a whole, and that's what we're supposed to be doing is, is governance. So, you know, I think we've already put in a, staff has put in a tremendous amount of work in on this already. And, and while we are looking for savings and I would hope that you'd be able to find some, you know, I would look to you to do that and use, without exposing this district to further, you know, some sort of a witch hunt, which I think if we start doing things that are not in compliance, we have certainly had people come after us before, and I don't want to risk that. So.
Just a brief comment.
Can I just, real quick? I tend to agree with, with Mrs. Snocamore on this. I think we've had this discussion now a couple of times. We gave some, I thought fairly clear feedback to staff the last time. You went and you responded to that feedback and you came back with a, with a structure here. Ms. Jackson has put together an alternative proposal that I think is worth getting some staff analysis back. I'd be interested in your, you know, your analysis of, you know, pros and cons about the alternative that Ms. Jackson has put forward. And Dr. Evans is, you know, suggesting another scrub to look at savings. Mr. DeBeck is suggesting this question of where the internal audit function goes along with just sort of naming the department, the accountability office, which I would, I would support. So maybe one more, you know, going back and responding to, you know, to Ms. Jackson's proposal and a little bit more analysis on the budget. But I don't, what, the feeling that I'm getting now is that we're in this, we're just going to keep having this conversation over and over again and, right? And so I, I think there's, what I'm hearing is consensus on the board to take one more look at this, but I think, I think the next time, I think when the staff comes back to us with a, with a framework, we need to make a motion and make a decision on that.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. So with no further comment, we'll, we'll move on.
Just let me, I'll confirm, naming the savings that Ms. Jackson's identified, the analysis, but her organ, that proposal and the other one. And then looking at if we've missed anything with regards to roles and...
It's a specific, you know, Mr. DeBeck's point about the internal audit.
Well, my case, it wasn't money, it wasn't money at all. It was just the logic of having accountability that's under the internal audit move over in the same place. That's not new money, not new staff. It's just basically putting them together so that the chief of accountability would be able to report their concerns about accountability directly to, at the cabinet level, to the superintendent. And I think that's a reasonable thing to have them do. Then there might be discussions around program planning where that person would be there listing and saying, wait a minute, I got some accountability questions. I think that makes sense.
Well, I'd like to chime in that we are trying to push as much money down and out of this building, out to the schools, and we are facing some really terrible decisions. But again, I don't want to face, you know, significant exposure and vulnerability on this. I understand with regard to, you know, federal, state, you know, even local citizens, you know. I mean, Mr. Page has stood up and he's trying to warn us. So, you know, I don't want us to, you know, be penny wise and pound foolish.
Just, Dr. Evans? One other little clarification on the savings too, and in line with what Ms. Snocamore was saying. Obviously, where if there are any savings that have to do with general fund unrestricted, that, you know, even a few dollars, that, that's very helpful. If it's on the restricted side, and again, we're increasing exposure and it has a lot to do with compliance with federal programs and so forth, that could fall into the category of, you know, penny wise and pound foolish, so just that little detail.
Okay. Let's move on to item G2, our plans for small high schools.
I'll make a motion.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion so I can speak to it.
Okay, you're moving to approve...
I moved to approve the plans for both San Diego High and Crawford.
Okay, and can we get a second? Okay. And then why don't we ask Mr. Koba to just give us any quick overview?
My only comments would be to ask if you wanted any update. We did go back and do the things that the board had asked for. You saw the strategic plans, you saw the goals that we had articulated. You wanted to clearly define and measures for the coming year in order to get to the end of the year and before the end of the year, but to do periodic assessments of how we're doing with reaching those goals.
Yeah.
So that's, that was the gist of today's update to the board from the workshop.
Yeah.
The only, just question...
Ms. Jackson.
I just wanted to comment to the staff and Dr. Burks and to the staffs of both San Diego High, I see you there, and Crawford. Thank you very much for all of your, your hard work and the hours that you, you've put in to make this a success. And I just wanted to say that to you publicly. I know it's been a long road and it's been a lot of hours, a lot of conversations, and so we thank you very much for that particular work.
Okay?
Ms. DeBeck.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the plans and according, I'm just looking at the San Diego complex plan, and it's a three-year plan. The only concern I have is, and I maybe I'm missing it because I'm not looking through every single page, but I don't see an evaluation plan for whether, what we discover as a result of not doing much except showing that we're going to project savings. In other words, what is the cast of whether or not the plan works?
Before I launch into that, I'd like to direct your attention to the purple document that you're getting. There was a question at the last board meeting, which I listened to online in my absence. And it was brought up that there were no indicators, no benchmarks, nothing to kind of track the progress of the small schools. I want to direct your attention to this purple sheet because this is from the January 27, 2004 board meeting where it outlined the draft indicators. And on page 24, 25, and 26, it specifically lists a number of indicators that you'll find referenced in that, the document that each of the small schools created. 71% of the indicators that are found in the plan as developed by the San Diego High School Complex come from this original document. 68% of those indicators come from this original document. So here's what we have to do as a, as a district, is decide if these are the things that we say that schools are going to meet, what will we do as a district if they don't meet them? That's pretty much it. But the indicators have been there for a long, long time.
Yeah, I love this document because the truth is that this is perfect, except the one thing that we haven't received is a report on how well they did.
And, and one other piece of that I should also point out, every year that the district has operated with this grant from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, 1.3 million, excuse me, 11.3 million dollars, at, at the end of every single year, we prepared a report to the foundation that indicated the schools' performance on each one of these standards. We've done these multiple measures for every single year. We submitted the last one February, around February 15th of 2010. So we've done it every single, every single year.
Do we get them? Because I can't remember seeing them.
Yeah, we've got all of them.
Well, I honestly would love to see that.
And clearly, Mr. DeBeck, these were before my time, so I actually went back and read hard copies of a number of these, but I can get electronic copies.
Were they agendized to the board?
That I don't know, sir.
I doubt it.
That I don't know.
I doubt it. See, what I think is happening is with all this accountability and compliance stuff, that the people that funded it got their reports, but I'm not sure the board did. Okay? And so the question is, after so many years, do we get the report?
Yeah, we did.
And is it...
Yes.
Let me put it another way, okay? This is a very, page 26 is a very simple list of indicators. Now, we might've got 150-page report. I'm not gonna, I might've even missed it because I don't read every single word that's given to me. If it's going off the gates, it's okay, I guess we'll have to do it. But as a board member, I'd like to see the summary of the data, okay? And I can't say that I remember seeing any summary data of the evaluations of these schools. Now, you know, so I'm dumb, or maybe I don't remember. Well, remind me. And before we get to the end of this, of the next three years, I'd like to see this stuff summarized, not, I don't want to use the bad words, not, you know, I don't want to have it buried in words, I want to have it summarized. I don't know how they feel, I know how I feel. That's it.
Any further comment? Yeah, I guess, actually, I think before I'm prepared to vote, Tony, could you just do exactly what Mr. DeBeck is asking? So we had a discussion in our workshop and what the, what the board asked for were, okay, what are the goals and how are we going to measure them? Could you summarize right now for San Diego High School and then for Crawford, what are the goals from this redesign plan and how are we going to measure them?
There are two items that are in your board doc packet. And for San Diego High School Complex, it has four particular elements that they're focusing on, support for English language learners, improve the campus climate, professional development, and access to UCA through G, which is really about college admissions within this state. They have a number of items that are listed beginning on page two of the document. These are standard items, we're talking about API, AYP, CASI, the whole alphabet soup, if you will, of indicators, both state and federal. They also then get into things like the tardiness in attendance. They look at things that gauge the school climate, agendas and surveys from the various meetings that look at how they collaborate, again, the A through G access, as well as the number of students in higher-level courses, both AP and IB. That's what you have under the San Diego Complex. Crawford mirrors that in a number of areas, but then it, it branches off differently. And I'm going to lift up only for Crawford, those items that primarily are different. They have graduation rate as one of their indicators. They look at sharing of resources and collaboration that sets it a little bit apart. They also add in, because of the, the number of students who are from different parts of the world who are at the Crawford Complex and the sheer beautiful, in my opinion, diversity that's there, they talk about the new arrivals center and then students who will be reclassified. And then they also talk about cluster meetings because there's an effort on the part of the Crawford Complex to really, really branch out and look at ways to bring more and more people together, K-12, to support the efforts at the school. Those plans were developed by the schools, by the staff, they, and the, and the faculty, and also community input. And they prepared those and they, again, brought them to you. Those are the two additions to all of the other documents you have in board docs around this. That sets up, I think, this particular meeting... board docs around this. That sets up, I think, this particular meeting apart from what you got on the 25th.
Any further questions or comments?
So we're going to get a report on the progress and which of the standards they're going to look at, the ones that happened the first time or the new version? You know, I like this one that you gave us with all the stuff that's there that was decided in the beginning, and it looked like it's very comprehensive. But if it's going to be watered down to, and I don't mean, if some stuff's going to be taken out, what I want to know now is what they're going to be evaluated on and how they look now compared to how they look when we get three years down the road. Because, you know, you could say, "We've made progress," okay? I'd like to see the benchmark for now.
We have the final Gates report that actually does an analysis. Our research and evaluation department provided us with some data to do this analysis from the beginning. We actually did it a year before the redesign, all the way through the end of this academic year, and that's in the final Gates report that is available to you. And so we'll do that. But I think ongoing, the indicators that have been generated by the school community ought to be the ones that we track from here on out.
And how is the school community going to track those indicators? What's the process that the school community?
Some of these things are going to have to be developed. For instance, the school climate service, I think they ought to be tailored to the specific school community. So some of those things have to be developed. Other things are existing. So all of the state and federally mandated assessments, we've got ways of tracking that. It's just the new kinds of things.
I guess what I'm asking is, there is a process within the school community in each San Diego and Crawford to develop this redesign and to identify goals and to identify indicators of progress. Through what process is that school community going to convene in an ongoing basis to measure whether it's working?
From what I gather, at least, I can speak for the Crawford complex because this happened last night, I am under the impression that Crawford complex as a whole, in addition with the cluster, will be meeting periodically to look at, here's some things that are concerns for us, here's some things that we need to work on, here's some ways that we can collaborate. So I am under the impression that during those periodic meetings, they'll have the opportunity to review this kind of data because they'll be operating as a cluster.
Okay. I'm really not as thrilled about, I'll call it, the soft measures as I am the student outcome measures. And in here, they say, and this is way back, this is the one you just gave us, performance indicator, increase the number of students who earn the grades of C or better to 75% at the end of the term of this project. It's not over yet, so I guess we could say, "There is a work in progress," but I don't know how close they are. Okay, so I think we need the baseline now. Okay? Then the GPA, show annual improvement of the numbers of students with college-weighted GPA at above 3.0. And I can go down the line here, passing scores on segments of the CASI. The percentage of students who pass both the English and math portions of the CASI will increase to 60%. These were all, this is draft, I mean, I guess we approved it, but, you know. But the point I'm getting at is, these all look really good. You know, I'm solidly behind having that data, but I don't think I've got it, and I don't think you've got it. And I don't think the schools got it. And I don't care really, honestly have to say it, school climate doesn't matter to me as much as, I mean, we could all say, gee, we feel good about what we're doing for kids, but the community wants to see what's happening for kids. Okay, so that's what I'm asking. Let's evaluate these schools about what's happening for kids, not how they feel about their progress. Or let's measure their progress in some, I'll call it, ways that we can accommodate, like how many A to G courses have been passed since we started this or not. Those things make sense to me, you know? And if the kids, you ask the kids if they feel good, their climate, that's good. I don't want to know what the faculty climate is, I want to know how the kids feel about whether they're learning or not. That's my bottom line, it really is.
Okay, board members, no further comment. Please vote. I want to echo Ms. Jackson and thank, I see the principals here from San Diego High and from Crawford, and I thank you for going through this process. And obviously, it's, I think, the board's expectation, but I know it's your expectation, that this wasn't simply an exercise to produce a document on paper so you could get through the budget crisis for this year and not have to do anything different, right? That was not the expectation of why we asked you to go through this process. And I know it's not why you decided to go through this process. So what we're going to need to, you know, be looking at together, certainly over the next year, is that we are coming together in an ongoing way as school communities and, you know, and deciding, are we doing what we said that we were going to do or aren't we doing what we said that we were going to do? And that's, you know, going to be something that we're going to ask to keep an eye on over the course of the year. Okay.
Board members, please vote.
Great, thanks. Pestles 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, and item G3, but maybe before we do item G3, Superintendent, you ready to report out on some administrative assignments?
Yes, thank you, President Burr. If I could, we have consulted with the board in closed session and have approval here for the assignment of personnel to the new assignment of area superintendent. And I have a list here I'd like to read. And these are basically in alphabetical order. We have Angela Bass to area superintendent, area five, which is Scripps Ranch, Mera Mesa Cluster, Rupi Boyd to area superintendent, area two, which is Crawford and the charter schools, Tony Burks to area nine, area superintendent, which is the Kearney Hoover Cluster, David Lorden to area eight, area superintendent, which is the Sarah Henry Cluster, Nellie Meyer to area superintendent, area seven, which is Mission Bay Point Loma Cluster, Hector Montenegro to area superintendent, area three, which is the San Diego High School Cluster, Marion Phelps to area superintendent, area four, to Claremont Madison Cluster, Mike Price to area superintendent, area six, University City La Jolla Cluster, Brenda Campbell to area superintendent, area one, Morris Lincoln Cluster, Shirley Wilson to assistant area superintendent, area one, Morris Lincoln Cluster.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, thank you, Latice. Okay, item G3, Superintendent?
President Burr, trustees, this is the third and final item that comes out of that board workshop of some time ago. And there was some discussion about the restoration of district assessments. We have Ron Rhodey, who is available to answer questions. In your packet was a small update on the benchmarks. And this, I should say, the district assessments, just to refresh everybody's background on this, we took a real good look at what are the core basic assessments or benchmarks necessary. We consulted with the campus leadership, did a survey, had over 4,400 either administrators or teachers respond, and this is the consensus. So, Ron, do you want to field any questions on the floor?
I'll move approval of the assessment. Thank you for your work.
Second, do we, any further board questions or comments?
Let's vote.
No, let's vote.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Ron.
Great testimony.
Yeah. Okay, item H4, our discussion about our budget update will be done at 5 o'clock, and so we'll move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. We've got speakers on items I-12 and I-13. Oh, my goodness. And, okay, and we've got a speaker, we'll just call him up. So Edith Smith, who wants to speak to items I-6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 21, 50, 54, 55, 56, and 63. You've got three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm here again on behalf of kids. I want to speak specifically to those items because those are items that require board action and a vote to form agreements and contracts with people that service our kids, primarily, if not exclusively, in special education. In the past, and most currently, the people that service our kids proportionally by percentages do not look like the kids they serve. We have an over amount of minorities in special education, which means that the people that service them need to be culturally competent, and they need to mirror to some greater extent the children that they serve so that we can improve performance in that area for our children. And I'm positive that staff has not, I've had many conversations with them, have not made the appropriate changes so that we can have the increased performance in that area. So I'm calling on you as our elected officials to scrutinize every single contract, to look at it in a proportionality as to what each and every person brings forth in terms of competency, in terms, not just academic, but in terms of delivering. Because if it's not relevant and they cannot connect with our children, you're just spending and wasting my money. And I really, really implore you to do that. Thank you very much.
Item I-12, we've got Rudy and Cheryl Johnson. Rudy's already left. Do you want to speak to item I-12?
I-12 and 13.
Sure, go ahead. Stuart Payne?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Just, Mr. Johnson had to leave.
Yeah.
He had another meeting to get to, so we would like to
Sure.
get his time as well.
Sure.
My name is Stuart Payne. I am a Chula Vista, California resident. I live in the East Lake area. And so you're probably wondering, why is this Chula Vista guy down here in San Diego causing problems? I am also a high school track coach at Hoover High School. While I live in the East Lake area, I am not from a privileged background, and the students and student athletes that I most identify with from my background are in the inner city. What we are here for today is to strongly encourage you to not sign any agreements with the local section of the CIF. We are also involved with a group called Citizens Against CIF, and we have been fighting with that organization for well over a year to get them to realize that, one, they're violating their own bylaws, they are disproportionately ruling against minority students in this section and causing them to be ineligible for athletic participation. Specifically about the agreement, what we would like for you to consider and what really concerns us is that in the bylaws under membership, it requires you, after you sign that agreement, to agree with all of their decisions blindly. So you sign that agreement today, you agreeing to abide by whatever decision they make four months from now, five months from now, a year from now, which in many cases will adversely affect the students that you are here to serve. If you fail to accept their rulings, then they have the grounds to sanction you as a district, as they have threatened in the Sweetwater District, to sanction the whole district. I don't know if you know how they're funded, but you do pay a fee, and that fee is a dollar and 15 cents for every student in your district, goes to the local CIF, and another 65 cents goes to the state-level CIF. And again, that's for the entire student population. It is not based on the number of students who participate in athletics. So you are being charged on your membership for students who get no direct benefit from the monies that you are paying because they do not participate in athletic competitions. In the Sweetwater District, we pay them $50,000 annually to be a member, and quite frankly, we do not see a return on that money. What we have requested, and I would urge you to do the same, is call that CIF body here and have them explain to you, what do you get for that 50, 60, 70,000, whatever your fee is. If the only thing you're getting is the opportunity to participate in their tournaments, I would suggest that you're not getting your return, because that assumes that all of your teams get to advance, which in many cases they don't. And if they rule your students ineligible, then that's another missed opportunity to participate.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, do you want to poll this item?
I want, yeah, I would like to have a chance to ask him a question.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Okay, so the, let me see if I understand you. You're saying, "Don't do this," okay? The alternative is you go on your own, and you have, let's say, a city athletic program and no CIF participation?
That's one way to do it, yes, sir.
What's the other way?
The other way to do it is to call the CIF officials down here, many of them are superintendents, and have them make some changes to their bylaws.
Well, that's, in other words, leverage our power with them.
Absolutely. And you are the biggest dog in the yard.
I understand that part.
Okay. Okay, do board members wish to poll any items from the consent agenda?
Are those the only speakers?
Yes, those are the only speakers.
Oh, okay.
And that was item 12 and 13.
That was item 12 and 13, great, thank you.
And then Ms. Johnson?
Did you want to, oh, Ms. Johnson, yeah, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Cheryl Johnson, and I'm going to piggyback on what Stuart said about our concerns with the citizen, I mean, against CIF. I am here, like Stu, to adamantly request that you not re-up their contract or agreement until you further scrutinize this organization. My main concern is that, and I know if you guys have read the papers recently, you know that we, the Citizens Against CIF, we have been fighting them, like Stu said, for the last year. And we have, they had allegedly an independent investigator look into our allegations of misconduct. My concern, and I hope your concern is as well or should be, is that this organization had the gall to have their defense attorney hire a friend and pay him $16,000 to clear them of their charges. They did not turn this over to the California Department of Education for any investigation into the discrimination, which they should have. And no one in this county, as well as Chula Vista, spoke up on our behalf to say, "Something's wrong here." And something's wrong with any organization that would not open themselves up to proper review, because that is not what we call an independent investigation. So until that investigation is properly conducted, we are asking that you take a look at this organization before you move forward on signing that agreement. And we would really appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. And then Ethel Larkin would like to speak on item I-67. Ethel? Ethel was just here. She just went out the door.
Ethel.
Uh, okay. Going once, going twice with Ethel.
Here she comes.
Okay, she's coming, okay, great. All right.
Hey, there she comes.
Is that me?
Yes.
Quite an act. Ethel Larkin, OSS, President, 7/24. Wanted to talk about why we were contracting out to Pizza Hut for pizzas, that's food service workers' work. And we do prepare pizzas now, so why are we contracting out this work? Taking away work from us, we're in a budget crisis right now, and I ran. And that needs to stay in-house. Just a question.
Thanks, thanks, Ethel. Okay, board members, any items that we wish to poll?
You can only poll item 113, actually. I'm sorry.
113?
Item, no, I-13.
I-13.
Item I-13, the membership agreement, and thank the staff for giving, making sure that we have every subject represented in that, in I-12, and then I-67. I do want us to pull this item and have a conversation with CIF. We have had many conversations and concerns with our student athletes, and I think that because those concerns come up after this is done, and here it comes in the middle of the season, we're not able to do much about it. So I think now is the time for us to take and look at the concerns that we have as a district, not just what we're hearing today, but all the ones that we have received, and then decide how we want to work with the CIF. I was told that they have a policy of denying and delaying issues until the season's over for some players, and then they can't actually play. So I think that I would ask that we table this item and have a conversation with them before we bring this back.
I would support that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Mr. Koba?
I just have a question here first, on the, it's listed as fiscal impact none, and I'm assuming from the information-
Well, it is. It comes back later. What happens, this is one of the things that sometimes the staff does, is we approve the membership now, but then maybe later in the year, we get the actual, I think after September, when our student count is done, then we'll get the actual bill for-
From the information, it was a dollar or something per student. That's over $100,000.
Before we jump in here and make these decisions, you know, I'm wondering where Bruce Ward is and why he's not here, and what are the implications of doing this at this point in time? Is there a deadline? Do we have to have this signed by a certain time? Are we going to be penalized by CIF? And all of our student athletes pay the consequences of us making a rather rash decision, and once again managing from the dais? Mr. Koba, can you-
Yes, and that's what I wanted to do, was intervene here. I noted that in the attachment, it says, "This is the agreement due on or before August 1st of each school," so that was one of the questions I had for myself. Second one was, "What is the actual fiscal impact?" Three, to get some clarity from the board, is to, I think what I'm hearing is develop a list of issues, concerns about our relationship with the CIF, have those presented to the CIF leadership, and get their response to come back to the board in the very near term so that that information can be used to shape your decision about what to do with the CIF. Now, I clearly recognize we want to do something that's right for our kids, balancing the purposes of our district too, and all of the student athletes and the student programs we have. So I do want to ask for the opportunity for us to do the research before we go to any closure on this issue.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, one of the things I'm hearing is eligibility question. And the only way you can answer, I'll call it, the areas of fairness or whatever around eligibility, is to have actual data on the kids who've been accepted or rejected. If, let me put it this way, I'm not going to, if CIF is uniformly unfair, then they're not discriminating. If they're uniformly unfair, they're not discriminating, they're just not operating very effectively, and we could argue over that, too. But we need to have some kind of data, not just, you know, complaints. There needs to be specifics. So if I was to vote for or against participation in CIF based on the lack of information, I would say I'd probably want to support CIF because they are traditionally the way we compete in the state. And I was a participant in CIF and got to the state, me myself, believe it or not, but it was a lot skinnier then. But the point is that nevertheless, they have historically is in the way for our schools to participate in state competitions. To deprive our kids of that is a serious issue.
Sure.
And so to have it as, based on a series of two or three cases, or whatever, is an issue for me, and I need to have pretty overwhelming evidence that it's a bad thing for us to participate. That needs to be brought to us, not just a complaint or the fact that there's, you know, allegations, but specifics about those. So that's what I would like to see. Also, I cannot see no as a fiscal impact on anything, especially when I pay dues for it, and if it's based on so much a kid, well, we got $100,000 here at stake. That'll pay for a whole lot of gate supplies.
Please pay it back.
Do we vote on table?
Do we need to vote on table? Ms. Ward?
I think that we don't act, I think we're all right.
Have to vote on table.
Don't have to.
There was a motion, before I got up and I apologized.
To table.
I'll be able to table. Yeah, okay.
All right, let's please vote on table.
Table.
Okay. Item I-67?
Yes, Mr. Patel, I see you in the audience. Could you tell us why you're doing this, that our wonderful food service staff cooked pizzas?
Dominoes.
Thank you. Good to see everyone today. And Ms. Larkin and I did have a conversation in the hall a few minutes ago, and basically, the Dominoes pizza, just to give you a little history, a few years back, we took pretty much all the à la carte items away from the students. Now, all we have are beverages, which are, right now, Gatorade, which may end up eventually coming off the menu as well, to buy as an à la carte item for cash sales, and also water, and baked chips. And some years ago, we had a lot of individually wrapped items that we sold, which probably weren't the healthiest in the world, so we removed all those items, but the students still wanted something of a brand. And we do make our own pizza once a week, and Dominoes delivers to middle and high schools once a week to give them an à la carte item, or call it sort of a treat as an option. Of course, our main function is to get as many reimbursable meals into students' hands, but the outcry of the students taking away the, which we know carbonated beverages are not good for you, with 12 teaspoons of sugar per Coca-Cola, and several other items, we've taken pretty much everything away, and this is the last branded item that we have on the menu today, but we're surely willing to talk to Ms. Larkin further about it.
Okay, based upon that branding piece, I would have to say I couldn't support this. I did mention, I spent last week, one morning, I think it was Thursday morning, with the students from M-VAS, and we had a conversation about branding. And we took not a scientific poll, just a classroom student poll about branding, and it was voted down. We're talking about raising money for the district, and if we brought things in, it would brand them how they felt, and most of them said, "No." So for that, I cannot support this. I think that if our staff can make pizza for them, that's fine, but to bring in a brand that is starting to brandize them again, I can't support that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I appreciate you, but I do appreciate all your hard work. I really, really-
Well, and we do have several brands of our own, as you've seen in the Sandy Coast Cafe, which is our new high school program.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, do you want to make a motion on this?
Well, my motion is that we not do this and cook our pizza in-house.
Okay, wait a minute, before you go, though.
Got a motion in a second. Go ahead and answer that.
Well, in the discussion, I got to say it, knowing this man and his staff, I think we can make better pizzas anyway.
I agree. I do agree.
But I'd rather go toe-to-toe, honestly, I would rather leave it in and say, "Okay" to the kids, "Here's a pizza, and here's a pizza, okay? We're better."
I agree.
And that's it.
Right.
And let's just run them out of business, instead of just saying, "We're prohibiting it and protecting our workers," which I understand that's a good idea, and I'm not fighting against it. But I honestly believe that somewhere in that really magical institution you're running, we can do a heck of a lot better job on pizzas than they can.
Actually, right now, we're looking for a good wheat crust that we can actually make our own pizzas from scratch, and we're trying to purchase more, they call them impingers, so, because cooking a pizza in a convection oven just doesn't do a good crust, so impingers is like a conveyor belt that you might see at Costco, and it actually cooks it from the top and bottom and gives you a better product.
Okay.
So we're working at it.
I was going-
See, that's why I would have an argument over the motion, because, see, I think you ought to just not prohibit them, but just beat them.
I agree.
I was going along with this and buying all of this, but I've got another option that you know I care about very deeply.
Sushi.
Sushi, which is a lot more healthy, you know, that is healthier for you, that the kids like an awful lot, and, you know, that we should be able to make that in-house. It's not that hard, and you can get a machine, a roller for that. But, Mr. Patel, you've, you know, not pursued that option. And it sure is a lot healthier than pizza.
California rolls, right?
You know, California rolls, I could come down and show you how it's done.
They've got anchovies in them.
There's no anchovies.
Training is certainly a part of it, and we appreciate it.
You what?
I said, training would certainly be a part of it, and I know you'd be great at the training.
It's not that hard. I mean, it's a lot easier than making a pizza in some ways.
Okay, so it sounds, it sounds like, the motion is to not renew this contract with Dominoes, but I think we would also need a plan to come back to us with, how do we cook pizza or other à la carte items in-house? Is that fair to ask?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, I'd rather table this than have us deal with the competition first.
Yeah, I'd rather see, you know, I could use the competition right now.
You know, I mean, we don't have to vote this minute, and I'm sure the contract's not going to be avoided anyway until we-
We don't have to buy it, starting September, we still have the ability to or not to.
Let's make them better pizzas.
The motion is not to do this contract at this particular time.
Let's table it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Rolls.
Not to do it at this time.
Not to do it at this time. Okay.
I mean, you're going to buy pizza machines for every single school. You could buy sushi centrally.
Please vote. Please vote.
Hey, I got DiGiorno's.
You can.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks, girl. Okay, all right, we will recess until 5 o'clock.
Here goes my Pizza Hut, 4:00 to 5:00. What am I going to do? Take a nap? Ahhh.
One plus one is easy for you and I, but for these kids, there's a lot that goes behind it. And I had an aha moment not too long ago when I was in Europe, and I was trying to count those coins and figure out those pounds and how they work, and the week before, I had just done coins with my students. And I kept thinking, "Well, come on, guys, it's a penny, it's brown, it's not that difficult." And then when I was there, and I was trying to do it myself, I thought, it takes a lot of doing, and we need to have that moment. We need to have that constant growing with our students to understand how difficult it really is for them. I, I'm not grown up yet. I'm a first grader. The energy that they bring into my life is amazing. The way that they come in, not knowing how to read, and leaving this classroom reading like a second grader or like a third grader. That's why I love first grade so much. Each year, I say, "I want to keep my class one more year. I want to loop, I want to be with them one more year." But then I think about having a whole new set of kids that I can, again, mold and send off reading. That, to me, is the most exciting thing.
She's determined that no matter where the child is when she receives them, that they're her child, and she's committed to making sure that they meet grade level and above.
First grade is a challenging year because kinder can be fun, and first grade, we really start working so hard, and she has always offered to take the most challenging students, those that might not be ready for first grade work.
I'm so excited. She's always wanted to win this award, and sometimes she would say that she would never get it, but I thought she would sometimes. She's such a great teacher.
I'm a traveler. I love to travel. And that's one thing that I really wish that I could just take my kids on all these wonderful field trips and just tape them everywhere. Whenever I'm around just anywhere, I really feel that receiving that background knowledge, having the knowledge of the world around us is very important for these kids. And it's not just about a book. It's not just about being in the classroom. It's what happens when you leave the classroom, when you walk out that door.
I like reading, and my teacher always lets us learn and play sometimes, so I'm trying to say that I love her. To say that my teacher, she helps work to her, so I'm happy about her, that she got most of our wish in her world.
She's always willing to work with our most needyest kids that are typically performing below grade level in reading, and always so excited to help our second language children as well, since she is a second language learner as well when she was growing up.
It is a big challenge, but I feel that I can relate to these kids, and because I can relate to them, I feel that I can do a good job with them. And I know that, for me, that wasn't something that was in my way, and it's not something that stopped me, and it's not something that stopped me from doing what I wanted to do. So if I can show them that I'm just like them, and I can achieve my dreams, they can too. And it's something that I've done always. I started working in Logan Elementary, which is also primarily bilingual school, and I loved it there, and I love working at Balboa, which I went back to, to my own school. I loved it there. And I wanted to continue working with this population. It's just where my niche is. If I can do it, why can't they?
You know, when I'm looking at special ed kids, oftentimes, they kind of lose, they lose the confidence that it takes to really go on to the next level. For us, it means going on to high school. And, you know, giving them that little bit of extra support that says, "Yes, you are smart. Yes, you can do math. Yes, you have some skills that'll take you to the next level, but you know what? You know the learning disabilities, so you're just really going to have to work a little harder, but that's okay. And it may take a little bit longer, and that's okay, too." Every fall and every spring, we kind of have to renovate the garden. So there's a huge way to take students out there, look at a garden bed, get the graph paper out, and say, "Well, if we divide this area in half, we can make sure that we've got some vegetables here that are going to be for three or four months. We can leave this area, we can renovate this area." So we start talking about what we're going to do, then I start throwing the math language in there, you know? Let's talk about it, actually. How much space do we need? I kind of get them problem-solving, and then that's when they realize, "Oh, well, I know how to do this. I can take half of this, or I can divide it in half," and I start talking fourths. I talk, "Well, what's the entire area?" You know? "Well," or "What's, you know, what's the distance around? Distance around, that's perimeter." So, you know, I kind of get kids to start thinking, the things that they already have to learn in math really have practical applications, because kids are always saying, "Well, why do I need that? What am I going to use that for?" That's when you have to take what they know and make it real for them.
It's really amazing, because it took a lot of hard work, but it was all worth it at the end, because now, like, it's a beautiful place to go now. A lot of people want to go see it. What I love about Mr. Patel is that, like, he's hardworking, she never gives up on anything he does, she is hopeful, helpful, she is so amazing, she is, she has a whole bunch of wisdom, she is loyal, I can trust her about anything, keep honest. Mr. Patel is just like another one of my heroes.
The garden is one of her brainchild about a couple of years ago, and she was able to bring in a large number of students and staff members from USD to help us renovate and upgrade a very debilitated, non-accessible and usable garden plot here at Montgomery Middle School into a very beautiful, usable space for the community members and for all to enjoy.
She's been very instrumental in bringing many different types of programs to Montgomery Middle School, including the Page to Stage that has students writing and producing a play at school. She has brought the community to Montgomery Middle School and made sure that Montgomery Middle School has been involved with the community.
She works so hard. That's why she deserves, yeah, she deserves to be the Teacher of the Year because she's always working, she brings home so much work every day, and she's always, she's helped me, too, so I understand how she is in the classroom helping other students. She's always working, always caring, and doesn't like do half work on anything. She's always full force on everything. So I think she deserves it.
Overall, M's passion, dedication, commitment, and love of the children, and her creativity are the characteristics that make up a great teacher.
Good job, Mr. Pardis. So what do you think? Is it too great?
The singing started many years ago. When I was in high school and college, I was not the type of student that got things the first time around. I really had to find a way to remember a huge body of information in often a very short amount of time. And so one of the things I came up with was I sang. I made lyrics or poems, mnemonic devices, anything I could to help me remember something.
Anaphase?
At first glance, it appears that science and music are not joined or not a good match. But actually, science is and aren't. And just like music is, it has its own language. It's had its own rhythm throughout the years and throughout history. And so it's actually really good. It lends itself very well to lyrics. Now, I've given them a class where exactly what they're learning, the curriculum, the content, it ties in directly to a career when they leave. My students will have a certificate of completion from Miramar. They also have a mammalian cell culture certificate from San Diego Workforce Partnership. And they are ready to go. They are ready to be employed.
And she approached me, she's very assertive. She approached me, and she told me about a biotech program that she wanted to put together. And to be honest with you, I didn't think that she'd ever pull it off. I didn't really know how many connections she had in the business world because she comes from the business of biotech. And she was able to get a lot of companies to donate, not just money, but equipment, things like lab coats, chemicals, whatever is needed for her to run this, for her to run this program. And as I said, it has been quite successful, and it's been great for kids. And kids use this information when they, when they leave our high school.
She is the most energetic person at this school. She's the teacher that everyone loves, that all the kids talk about. I hear everything that's going on in her class every day because all the students love her.
Erica, she's an exceptional teacher. More importantly, she's an exceptional wife, mom. And so what you see here is the same thing that she, she does when she's at home.
Well, I'm really happy right now because I just found out that I got accepted to an uncle fertility program at UCSD. And she got me involved in it. She told me about it. I went to the meeting. I applied for it. I wrote an essay. She wrote me a recommendation.
They're not just learning the basics of biology. They're learning more about biology, about what they can use and how it's tangible, how it works in the real world. They can actually apply it, not just in class, but when they leave high school.
Life is a lot different for our young people than it was for, you know, teachers like myself. And even though I had very humble beginnings, I also totally relate to, to living in a, you know, an area where you're dealing with violence every day, or drugs, or gang activity. And I didn't always see the connection between the school and what I had to live, what I had to go through. And it's just, it's always very emotional for me to look at how many students aren't given that opportunity in schools today to actually grab onto something that they love and to let it motivate them to change their condition.
You know, we all have such, such important positions. Each one of us, each classified member has an important position. We all have to be a member of the team. And I think for the most part, those classified people in the past, you're pretty proud of that.
I say Jan is one of the most valuable persons in the path of this school. And it's because of her, really her thorough knowledge of running schools, the budget, but also her gentle demeanor. I mean, just the way she talks to the staff and students and parents, it's, that's the first impression they have of the school. So when they're upset or they have questions, they talk to her. And automatically, you can sense the calming down, and also that the person's acknowledging what they have to say without giving any kind of, oh, what's the word, criticism, but rather like, oh, I hear what you're saying. She acknowledged where it's coming from. And that's halfway, that's pretty much the beginning.
I started as a classroom aide. Served as a classroom aide for a couple of years. And then the district decided to bring in extra personnel into office because they knew that they were going to bring in some computers. So everything would be placed on database codes. So I applied for that job here at Chesterton. And since my previous appointment was legal secretary on the field, I decided to apply for that job, work as a clerk, and then found out that I had a manual typewriter. And the secretary was only one with an electric typewriter. So the secretary retired. And I decided, oh, my goodness, I think I would like to apply. And of course, I did.
I was telling my husband last night that Jan won this award. He said, yeah, isn't that word called the Jan Kosaka Award by now? Because it's just, she's just known as the best everywhere she goes.
Jan is our go-to person here at our site. And she has everything that her kids need. So if you ask her a question in the morning, she doesn't have to answer like there is a lot of time by the end of the day.
If we don't hand in something like sugar, it's a sweet little American sentiment.
Did I misplace your...
She's on top of things. Like, before I can even open my mouth, she's already saying what I'm thinking. And she's very informative to some things that I'm still learning.
Also, I really, really want to talk about her potato salad. Her potato salad is the very best potato salad on the planet. And I've told her this many times. I've tried to get the recipe out of her, not quite sure. You know, she says it's real easy, and she throws a few things in. But she never really gives it up.
And knowing my mom, she was always very friendly, always pretty much remembered everybody's face. And that doesn't always happen every day in every school. So that's kind of nice. I think that definitely makes it a lot more comfortable for people to know and visit and want to go into the office and remember that school a little bit more.
This is just a great place to work. I've been supported by many people. I've had the same clerk for 20-plus years. We've worked together. And Linda, who also I've worked with for over 20 years. I've seen wonderful teaching, staff just is great, support staff, classified staff, parent educators, great community, a lot of parents, hardworking parents, and hardworking students. And also, I've had, I've been trained by eight administrators.
behind it. And I had an aha moment not too long ago when I was in Europe and I was trying to count those coins and figure out those pounds and how they work. And the week before, I had just done coins with my students. And I kept thinking, well, come on, guys, it's a penny. It's brown. It's not that difficult. And then when I was there and I was trying to do it myself, I thought, it takes a lot of doing. And we need to have that hump moment. We need to have that constant growing with our students to understand how difficult it really is for them. I, I'm not grown up yet. I'm a first grader. I, the energy that they bring into my life is amazing. The way that they come in not knowing how to read and leaving this classroom reading like a second grader or like a third grader. That's why I love first grade so much. Each year, I say, I want to keep my class one more year. I want to loop. I want to be with them one more year. But then I think about having a whole new set of kids that I can, again, mold and send off reading. That, that, to me, is the most exciting thing.
She's determined that no matter where the child is when she receives them, that they're her child. She's committed to making sure that they meet grade level and above.
First grade is a challenging year because kinder can be fun. In first grade, we really start working so hard. And she has always offered to take the most challenging students, those that might not be ready for first grade work.
I'm so excited. She's always wanted to win this award. And sometimes she would say that she would never get it, but I thought she would sometimes. She's such a great teacher.
I'm a traveler. I love to travel. And that's one thing that I really wish that I could just take my kids on all these wonderful field trips and just tape them everywhere. Whenever I'm around just anywhere, I really feel that receiving that background knowledge, having the knowledge of the world around us is very important for these kids. And it's not just about a book. It's not just about being in the classroom. It's what happens when you leave the classroom, when you walk out that door.
I like reading. And my teacher always lets us learn and play sometimes. So I'm trying to say that I love her. To say that my teacher, she, she helps work to her. So I'm happy about her, that she got her flowers and her world.
She's always willing to work with our most needyest kids that are typically performing below grade level in reading. Always so excited to help our second language children as well. So she is a second language learner as well when she was born.
It is a big challenge, but I feel that I can relate to these kids. And because I can relate to them, I feel that I can do a good job with them. And I know that for me, that wasn't something that was in my way.
And it's not something that stopped me, and it's not something that stopped me from doing what I wanted to do. So if I can show them that I'm just like them and I can achieve my dreams, they can too. And it's something that I've done always. I started working in Logan Elementary, which is also primarily bilingual school. And I loved it there. And I love working at Balboa, which I went back to, to my own school, I loved it there. And I wanted to continue working with this population. It's just where my niche is. If I can do it, why can't they?
You know, when I'm looking at special ed kids, oftentimes, they kind of lose, they lose the confidence that it takes to really go on to the next level. For us, it means going on to high school. And, you know, giving them that little bit of extra support that says, yes, you are smart, yes, you can do math, yes, you have some skills that'll take you to the next level, but you know what? You have a learning disability, so you're just really gonna have to work a little harder. But that's okay. And it may take a little bit longer, and that's okay too. Every fall and every spring, we kind of have to renovate the garden. So there's a huge way to take students out there, look at a garden bed, get the graph paper out and say, well, if we divide this area in half, we can make sure that we've got some vegetables here that are gonna be for three or four months. We can leave this area, we can renovate this area. So we start talking about what we're gonna do, then I start throwing the math language in there. You know, let's talk about fractions, how much space do we need? I kind of get them problem solving, and then that's when they realize, oh, well, I know how to do this, I can take half of this, or I can divide it in half. And I start talking forwards, by talking, well, what's the entire area? You know, well, or what's, you know, what's the distance around? Distance around, that's perimeter. So, you know, I kind of get kids to start thinking the things that they already have to learn in math really have practical applications. Because kids are always saying, well, why do I need that? What am I gonna use that for? That's when you have to take what they know and make it real for them.
The garden is really amazing because it took a lot of hard work, but it was all worth it at the end because now, like, it's a beautiful place to go now. A lot of people want to go see it. Well, I love about Mr. Pardis is that he's hardworking, she never gives up on anything she does. He is hopeful, helpful, he is so amazing. She has a whole bunch of wisdom, she is loyal, I can trust her about anything, she's honest. Mr. Pardis is just like another one of my heroes.
The garden is one of her brainchild about a couple of years ago. And she was able to bring in a large number of students and staff members from USD to help us renovate and upgrade a very debilitated, non-accessible and usable garden plot here at Montgomery Middle School into a very beautiful, usable space for the community members and for all to enjoy.
She's been very instrumental in bringing many different types of programs to Montgomery Middle School, including the Page to Stage that has students writing and producing a play at school. She has brought the community to Montgomery Middle School and made sure that Montgomery Middle School has been involved with the community.
She works so hard, that's why she deserves, yeah. She deserves to be the Teacher of the Year because she's always working, she brings home so much work every day, and she's helped me too. So I understand how she is in the classroom helping other students. She's always working, always caring, and doesn't do half work on anything. She's always full force on everything, so I think she deserves it.
Overall, Em's passion, dedication, commitment, and love of the children and her creativity are the characteristics that make up a great teacher.
Good job, Mr. Pardis. So what do you think, is it too great?
The singing started many years ago. When I was in high school and college, I was not the type of student that got things the first time around. I really had to find a way to remember a huge body of information in often a very short amount of time.
We love DNA made of nucleotides.
And so one of the things I came up with was I sang. I made lyrics or poems, mnemonic devices, anything I could to help me remember something.
We are, when you need to do mutations, made of nucleotides. Sugar phosphate and a base bonded down one side.
Anaphase?
At first glance, it appears that science and music are not joined or not a good match. But actually, science is an art, just like music is. It has its own language, it's had its own rhythm throughout the years and throughout history. And so it's actually really good, it lends itself very well to lyrics. Now, I've given them a class where exactly what they're learning, the curriculum, the content, it ties in directly to a career when they leave. My students will have a certificate of completion from Miramar. They also have a mammalian cell culture certificate from San Diego Workforce Partnership. And they are ready to go, they are ready to be employed.
And she approached me, she's very assertive. She approached me and she told me about a biotech program that she wanted to put together. And to be honest with you, I didn't think that she'd ever pull it off. I didn't really know how many connections she had in the business world because she comes from the business of biotech. And she was able to get a lot of companies to donate, not just money, but equipment, things like lab coats, chemicals, whatever is needed for her to run this program. And as I said, it has been quite successful and it's been great for kids. And kids use this information when they leave our high school.
She is the most energetic person at this school. She's the teacher that everyone loves, that all the kids talk about. I hear everything that's going on in her class every day because all the students love her.
Erica, she's an exceptional teacher, more importantly, she's an exceptional wife, mom. And so what you see here is the same thing that she does when she's at home.
Well, I'm really happy right now because I just found out that I got accepted to an enco fertility program at UCSD. And she got me involved in it, she told me about it, I went to the meeting, I applied for it, I wrote an essay. She wrote me a recommendation.
They're not just learning the basics of biology, they're learning more about biology, about what they can use and how it's tangible, how it works in the real world. They can actually apply it, not just in class, but when they leave high school.
Life is a lot different for our young people than it was for teachers like myself. And even though I had very humble beginnings, I also totally relate to to living in, you know, an area where you're dealing with violence every day or drugs or gang activity. And I didn't always see the connection between school and what I had to live, what I had to go through. And it's just, it's always very emotional for me to look at how many students aren't given that opportunity in schools today to actually grab onto something that they love and to let it motivate them to change their condition.
You know, we all have such important positions, each one of us, each classified member has an important position. We all have to be a member of the team. And I think for the most part, most classified people have, and everybody has that.
I say Jan is one of the most valuable persons we have at the school. And because of her, really her thorough knowledge of running schools, the budget, but also her gentle demeanor. I mean, just the way she talks to the staff and students and parents, that's the first impression they have of the school. So when they're upset or they have questions, they talk to her and automatically you can sense they're calming down and also that the person's acknowledging what they have to say without giving any kind of, oh, what's the word, criticism. Rather like, oh, I hear what you're saying. She acknowledged where it was coming from, and that's halfway, that's pretty much it.
I started as a classroom aide, served as a classroom aide for a couple of years. And then the district decided to bring in extra personnel into office because they knew that they were going to bring in some computers. So everything would be placed on database. So I applied for that job here at Chesterton. And since my previous appointment was legal secretary on field, I decided to apply for that job, work as a clerk. And then found out that I had a manual typewriter. And the secretary was the only one with an electric typewriter. So the secretary retired, and I decided, oh my goodness, I think I would like to apply. And of course, I did.
I was telling my husband last night that Jan won this award. And he said, yeah, isn't that word called the Jan Kosaka Award by now? Because it's just, she's just known as the best everywhere she goes.
Jan is our go-to person here at our site, and she does everything that our group does. So if you ask her a question in the morning, she doesn't have the answer right there, so I have to read it by the end of the day. If we don't hand in something by the end of the school, sugar is the sweet little girl that says, did I misplace your...
She's on top of things, like before I keep it open my mouth, she's already saying what I'm thinking. And she's very informative to some things that I'm still learning.
Also, I really, really want to talk about her potato salad. Her potato salad is the very best potato salad on the planet. And I've told her this many times, I've tried to get the recipe out of her, not quite sure. You know, she says it's real easy and she throws a few things in, but she never really gives it up.
And knowing my mom, she was always very friendly, always pretty much remembered everybody's face. And that doesn't always happen every day in every school, so that's kind of nice. I think that definitely makes it a lot more comfortable for people to go in and visit and want to go into the office and remember that school a little bit more.
It's just a great place to work. I've been supported by many people. I've had the same clerk for 20-plus years, we've worked together. And Linda, who also I've worked with for over 20 years. I've seen wonderful teaching, staff just is great, support staff, classified staff, parent educators, great community, a lot of parents, hardworking parents and hardworking students. And also, I've had, I've been trained by eight administrators.
One plus one is easy for you and I, but for these kids, there's a lot that goes behind it. And I had an aha moment not too long ago when I was in Europe and I was trying to count those coins and figure out those pounds and how they work. And the week before, I had just done coins with my students. And I kept thinking, well, come on, guys, it's a penny, it's brown, it's not that difficult. And then when I was there and I was trying to do it myself, I thought, it takes a lot of doing and we need to have that moment. We need to have that constant growing with our students to understand how difficult it really is for them. I'm not grown up yet, I'm a first grader. The energy that they bring into my life is amazing. The way that they come in not knowing how to read and leaving this classroom reading like a second grader or like a third grader, that's why I love first grade so much. Each year, I say, I want to keep my class one more year, I want to loop, I want to be with them one more year. But then I think about having a whole new set of kids that I can again mold and send off reading. That, to me, is the most exciting thing.
She's determined that no matter where the child is when she receives them, that they're her child, she's committed to making sure that they meet grade level and above.
First grade is a challenging year because kinder can be fun. In first grade, we really start working so hard. And she has always offered to take the most challenging students, those that might not be ready for first grade work.
I'm so excited, she's always wanted to win this award. And sometimes she would say that she would never get it, but I thought she would sometimes. She's such a great teacher.
I'm a traveler, I love to travel. And that's one thing that I really wish that I could just take my kids on all these wonderful field trips and just take them everywhere. Whenever I'm around just anywhere, I really feel that receiving that background knowledge, having the knowledge of the world around us is very important for these kids. And it's not just about a book, it's not just about being in the classroom. It's what happens when you leave the classroom, when you walk out that door.
I like reading and my teacher always lets us learn and play sometimes. So I'm trying to say that I love her.
To say that my teacher, she has worked too hard. So I'm happy that she got her graduation in her world.
She's always willing to work with our most needy kids that are typically performing below grade level in reading. Always so excited to help our second language children as well. Since she is a second language learner as well when she was born.
It is a big challenge, but I feel that I can relate to these kids. And because I can relate to them, I feel that I can do a good job with them. And I know that for me, that wasn't something that was in my way. And it's not something that stopped me, and it's not something that stopped me from doing what I wanted to do. So if I can show them that I'm just like them and I can achieve my dreams, they can too. And it's something that I've done always. I started working in Logan Elementary, which is also primarily bilingual school. And I loved it there. And I love working at Balboa, which I went back to, to my own school, I loved it there. And I wanted to continue working with this population. It's just where my niche is. If I can do it, why can't they?
You know, when I'm looking at special ed kids, oftentimes, they kind of lose, they lose the confidence that it takes to really go on to the next level. For us, it means going on to high school. And, you know, giving them that little bit of extra support that says, yes, you are smart, yes, you can do math, yes, you have some skills that'll take you to the next level, but you know what? You have a learning disability, so you're just really gonna have to work a little harder. But that's okay. And it may take a little bit longer, and that's okay too. Every fall and every spring, we kind of have to renovate the garden. So there's a huge way to take students out there, look at a garden bed, get the graph paper out and say, well, if we divide this area in half, we can make sure that we've got some vegetables here that are gonna be for three or four months. We can leave this area, we can renovate this area. So we start talking about what we're gonna do, then I start throwing the math language in there. You know, let's talk about fractions, how much space do we need? I kind of get them problem solving, and then that's when they realize, oh, well, I know how to do this, I can take half of this, or I can divide it in half. And I start talking forwards, by talking, well, what's the entire area? You know, well, or what's, you know, what's the distance around? Distance around, that's perimeter. So, you know, I kind of get kids to start thinking the things that they already have to learn in math really have practical applications. Because kids are always saying, well, why do I need that? What am I gonna use that for? That's when you have to take what they know and make it real for them.
The garden is really amazing because it took a lot of hard work, but it was all worth it at the end because now, like, it's a beautiful place to go now. A lot of people want to go see it. Well, I love about Mr. Pardis is that he's hardworking, she never gives up on anything she does. She is hopeful, helpful, she is so amazing. She has a whole bunch of wisdom, she is loyal, I can trust her about anything, she's honest. Mr. Pardis is just like another one of my heroes.
The garden is one of her brainchild about a couple of years ago. And she was able to bring in a large number of students and staff members from USD to help us renovate and upgrade a very debilitated, non-accessible and usable garden plot here at Montgomery Middle School into a very beautiful, usable space for the community members and for all to enjoy.
She's been very instrumental in bringing many different types of programs.
She's been very instrumental in bringing many different types of programs to Montgomery Middle School, including the Page to Stage that has students writing and producing a play at school. She has brought the community to Montgomery Middle School and made sure that Montgomery Middle School has been involved with the community.
She works so hard. That's why she deserves, yeah. She deserves to be the Teacher of the Year because she's always working. She brings home so much work every day. And she's always, she's helped me too. So I, I understand how she is in the classroom helping other students. She's, she's always working, always caring and doesn't like, do half work on anything. She's always full force on everything. So I think she deserves it.
Overall, Em's passion, dedication, commitment, and love of the children and her creativity are the characteristics that make up a great teacher.
Good job, Mr. Pardis. So what do you think? Is it too great?
The singing started many years ago. When I was in high school and college, I was not the type of student that got things the first time around. I really had to find a way to remember a huge body of information in often a very short amount of time.
We love DNA made of nucleotides.
And so one of the things I came up with was I sang. I made lyrics or poems, mnemonic devices, anything I could to help me remember something.
We are when you need to detect mutations. Made of nucleotides. Sugar phosphate and a base bonded down one side.
Anaphase?
At first glance, it appears that science and music are not joined or not a good match. But actually, science is an art. And just like music is, it has its own language, it's had its own rhythm throughout the years and throughout history. And so it's actually really good. It lends itself very well to lyrics. Now, I've given them a class where exactly what they're learning, the curriculum, the content, it ties in directly to a career when they leave. My students will have a certificate of completion from Miramar. They also have a mammalian cell culture certificate from San Diego Workforce Partnership. And they are ready to go. They are ready to be employed.
And she approached me, she's very assertive. She approached me and she told me about a biotech program that she wanted to put together. And to be honest with you, I didn't think that she'd ever pull it off. I didn't really know how many connections she had in the business world because she comes from the business of biotech. And she was able to get a lot of companies to donate, not just money, but equipment, things like lab coats, chemicals, whatever is needed for her to run this, for her to run this program. And as I said, it has been quite successful and it's been great for kids.
Okay, if we can, if we can reconvene this meeting. Okay, we're on to item H4, which is a continuation of our discussion around the budget. We've got several speakers, so I'm going to call up public, public speakers first. Because we've got so many speakers, we're going to limit testimony to two minutes each. So, let me call the following folks. David Page, my man Stone Eastman, Katie Perle, Olivia Solanen, and Julie Moore.
My name is David Page. I live at 9393 Anglin Place in San Diego, still. And I'm the Chairperson of the District Advisory Council for Compensatory Education. And these are the types of funds that that organization oversees. Before we go through another session of cutting this and that and trying to maneuver monies in some technical manner, which really is still going to amount to supplanting, I really wanted to state the facts, and if they're not, please, please say so. That what we've seen today is this, earlier today, we looked at reorganizing the office that monitors these funds and talked about how we need more monitoring and so on. While at the same time, this district does not spend the 15% that's allowable to oversee those funds on the program monitoring side. And when we get in trouble as a district is when we allow finance to not do the right thing, not when program monitoring does the right or wrong thing. And so our issue has nothing to do with compliance with the monitoring side. It has to do with not funding the monitoring side to monitor at its fullest capacity and allowing the finance department to find these types of ways to do things. I'm asking, do you have any documents before you or will you be presented with anything that tells you that the federal or state government told you that it's okay to use Title I in the manner that's being suggested here today? Again, I want to follow the dots. What's happened here is this board and the district said there's going to be a freeze on spending and hiring. What do you know, we got $16 million carried over. That money was supposed to have been spent on student programs, the neediest students this district has, who need the most academic achievement acceleration. And it was denied them. And now somehow you have some extra money to spend and you want to wring your hands over, how can we use this best, when you should have used it for this current year? The other thing is, is in the last three years, in the next three years, you have given 13% in raises to your employees, accepted a 50% increase in benefits, and not taken the advice of people over using Kaiser Insurance, which would have saved you $20 million. You've chosen employees over students in the worst budget crisis the state's ever seen. And history will show 13% pay raise and not the right thing for the students. So now you want to supplant the students' monies and, and do it off their backs. And I'm shamed.
Mon nom est Olivia. Je suis dans le premier année à Language Academy. Venez à mon école, s'il vous plaît. Avant, tu prends un peu de l'argent de mon école. My name is Olivia. I am in the first grade at the Language Academy. Come to my school and visit before you make a decision.
Hi, my name's Stone. I'm at the Language Academy. And I'm fighting for my school because I don't want them to close my school. And I want to stay in the first grade.
He can't find his notes. Like he has something written and he can't find it. I want to thank you who have visited, and we really appreciate that. Those that you haven't, you're missing out, you should come check out our school. Just so that you know, we have no school-sponsored art classes. We have no school-sponsored music classes. We have no science lab. We have no computer lab. We have language. French is difficult. And this kid, these kids can read it and write it and speak it. And you say you don't want to, you want to keep cuts away from our children. But this 10% across the board will remove a resource teacher. And that's directly affecting our children. So if you would, take a look again at the Magnet School of America report and base some decisions on, on what they said. And stick with magnets because we're dedicated. Thank you.
Hi, Julie Moore from Longfellow, Spanish Immersion Magnet School. You may have received some emails from some of our parents asking for you to continue to support our 30-year-old program that's proven to be a success for the school district and for San Diego as a whole. So we just ask you yet again that when you're making these decisions, work with the schools, work with us to come up with the best solutions and keep the programs for the kids. My four-year-old goes to kindergarten in two years, and I really want him to join his sister at Longfellow. I would hate to see the program go away. And we're really feeling anxious about it because the cuts keep hurting the children and keep hurting the program. Thank you.
Dedicated magnet schools, schools with 100% magnet enrollment should be exempt from further budget cuts. My children attend the Language Academy where all of our magnet funds are used to hire staff to support our language immersion programs. We currently have two classroom teachers with their own classes and two resource teachers paid for with magnet funds. These resource teachers are not like resource teachers found at some other schools. They are language-focused and provide specific instruction in Spanish and French. They are in the classrooms every day, working with 18 to 30 students on a daily basis, providing support in the target language that no one else can do. A 10% reduction in magnet funds, coupled with another proposed cut to discretionary funds, would result in the loss of one of these essential teachers. Dedicated magnets should be exempt from more cuts because we bring in ADA revenue to the district. If you continue to water down our programs with cuts, you will lose ADA funds when families move their children to private or charter schools. Dedicated magnets exemplify what Magnet Schools of America said magnet schools should be. Stick with magnets. We're dedicated.
Yo soy una, un estudiante de cuarto grado en la Language Academy. Por favor, no quiten nuestro dinero. Nosotros tenemos maestras especiales excelentes. Me enojaré a tener uno de ellos quitado. I am a fourth grader at the Language Academy. Please don't take away our money. We have great resource teachers. It would disappoint me to have one of them taken away.
Okay, Debbie O'Toole, was that Sarah who just spoke? Sarah Douda?
This was me.
Oh, okay. So Sarah and Debbie O'Toole.
I'm the mother of two students at Lindbergh-Sweitzer Elementary. Thank you for giving me the choice to choose schools. As Lindbergh-Sweitzer is not my home school, and I do drive my kids to school every day. I also support the exciting and inspiring refocused service learning magnet underway at our school. The fact that we are a successful magnet school was underscored by a recent visit from representatives from another school district who want to learn best practices from us. You can bet they went away impressed. However, we would like you to note that the impressive work we've been doing has been on an absolute shoestring budget. Of all the magnet schools in our district, we're the second lowest funded. And you'll note that on the sheet I just gave you. And in case you're thinking that the unequal funding levels are simply due to student enrollment, please note the three examples listed. We do understand that our district is in a desperate financial crisis. That is the reason we are attempting to, sorry, that is the reason we attempted to secure federal grant money to support our magnet. We were willing to do our part to help balance the budget. 10% of our magnet budget is $9,216. And if that, that's a sacrifice we're called upon to make, so be it. However, we respectfully request that you allow us to take that amount only from our magnet discretionary budget and leave our FTEs intact. I'm shaking. I don't know how those little kids just got up here. Yes, it will be a challenge to cut the instructional supplies budget in half, but our magnet program can and will continue to shine if and only if we are allowed to retain our one and a half positions, which are the very heart and soul of our service learning magnet. I have given you more information in the printout about why it is so crucial that we keep our one and a half positions, without which our magnet would suffer greatly, as with the rich educational experiences which they have been making possible for our 700 students, 200 which are special needs. Thank you in advance for simply allowing us to take any magnet cuts from our discretionary funds and to leave our staff in place. Thank you.
You have the tools to fix our financial problem. Instead of cutting where it affects the kids the most, you need to declare a state of financial emergency. This would allow you to renegotiate labor contracts. This is the only solution that won't destroy the classroom. This is the only solution that will keep our libraries open, even if it's just part-time. And let us keep our health techs to take care of our sick kids. It is clear now that the salary rollbacks are the only solution. Do you remember back when you asked the community what their budget cut priorities were? They said, keep the cuts away from the kids. Do you remember your colored dot meeting determining your priorities? You said, keep the cuts away from the kids. We already have larger class sizes, fewer instructional days, and stripped-down programs. Do not cut any further from them. Declare an emergency, keep your promise, and keep the cuts away from the kids. Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth Nagy, Elaine Sabetti, Adalia Lovado, Joan O'Hara, and Melinda Fenska.
Hello, all. Elizabeth Nagy, I have three kids, one about to hit kindergarten, one in 10th grade this fall, and one in fifth grade this, one in sixth grade this fall. And I'm the Passgate District Advisory Chair. We've been here and done this already. You've heard me speak before. I'm not going to go over all of that again. Gate has given over 30%, more than 30% over the last two years. And, you know, I'd say for Gate parents, we're more than happy to participate in the cuts, but it needs to be fair across every single department, across every single subgroup, including teachers. And so when I heard you rescind some of those, you know, I ask, have the teachers and have all programs asked to have a 30% cut? So before you look at these programs that are now back on this, on the chopping block, so to speak, I'd ask you to really look at, over the last year or two, you've already asked people to cut, and we've said, yes, we'll help because it's a crisis. But are we doing it in a fairly, in a fair way to all of our children? So as far as the fairness part goes, I'd also like you to look at, are we really assessing if we're, if each of our children are making a year's worth of growth? And I know I come back to that, but we're still not doing that. And as we make these cuts, do we have the mechanism to be able to assess how bad off are we? are we or did it really make any difference by those cuts? And so for a lot of our population, we don't have the ability to that, to do that. I've even heard from some parents saying that if the Gate funds get cut again, there won't really even be a shell of a program. And so, and I know there's several different ways you can cut the Gate funds. You know, I've heard parents even say to me now, why should I even take the, let my child take the STAR test? Because it doesn't help. And I'd like to be able to nip some of those kinds of things in the bud, but we really need direction for you. So please consider having a mandate for Gate students. Thank you.
Mr. Barrera and members of the board, my name is Adalia Lovato. I reside at 18563 Caminito-Pasadero in San Diego. I currently work as a vice principal in a large urban school with over 700 students in City Heights. I'm here today to speak regarding line item number 55 and the proposed reductions in our general fund unrestricted. I was here previously with a large group of vice principals and principals in January. At that time, we presented a large amount of data about the types of duties that vice principals perform to support our students and teaching staff and the incredible amount of time we put in to do so. I'd like to let you know today that a reduction of 40 FTE does not actually mean a 4.48 million savings. The difference between a classroom teacher and a vice principal is less than 0.3 FTE. 40 VPs reinstated to the classroom really equates to a savings of only 12 FTE, which is less than 1 million. I can use myself as an example. In fall 2008, I was reinstated to a third-grade classroom at Marvin. During that time, my loss at Fay was incredible. The resource teacher, school counselor took on many of my job responsibilities. This was unfortunate. It took the resource teacher away from far below basic students, providing small group support, took the counselor away from providing the social-emotional guidance groups that she ran. Upon my reinstatement at Fay, this allowed the principal to do planning and create Fay's Learning Center, which is an opportunity now for Tier Two, Tier Two and Three students to get that small group instruction that they so need and also the social-emotional support from the counselor. And I'm happy to say that because of the Learning Center this year, those students have really, really made a tremendous amount of growth on our benchmark assessments and we're looking forward to seeing their STAR testing results in the summer. So once again, I'd like to say vice principals are not a luxury. We are critical in all aspects of school accountability and safety. Removing us from the school community puts all those job duties on the backs of teachers and it really has an impact on students. Thank you for listening.
Elaine Sabeti, on behalf of CSEA OTBS. So I've been looking at these proposed reductions and trying to figure out what they mean and what the impact will be to our students. And I'll be darned if I can come up with an intelligent answer based on the information that's here. I see several hundred classified FTEs are being eliminated. It's interesting, especially since less than a week ago, you decided to rescind layoff notices to over 100 teachers. And from what I can tell, you want to close the IMC and cut all the library assistants and library texts. This effectively closes most of our school libraries. Considering the large body of research that now exists linking well-stocked, well-staffed school libraries to student achievement, this seems, well, less than prudent. Taxpayers in the district have worked together to give our children access to beautiful libraries filled with wonderful books, as well as access to websites and databases that the district pays for. We have, for the first time in years, opened nearly all of our school libraries and now, in spite of the fact that we're in program improvement and the fact that we're obligated by Williams Settlement to provide textbooks to every student, we're considering shutting down school libraries? I don't get it. And on top of that, you want to close off the only other access to books for schools, the IMC. These cuts will directly impact services to students and leave them at an even greater disadvantage. I hope that you will seriously consider all the implications of these cuts to student achievement before you decide to move forward.
Joan O'Hara, para president of 759 of the Para Educators. Two minutes to tell you how far off-base you are isn't enough, but on page two, you have 343.28 classified employees. Well, that's full-time positions and most of your classified don't work eight hours. So you can add another 100 to that. You give us cuts and then you sneak more cuts in by taking off programs. But I want you to see the sign, keep our students safe. You're going to get rid of health texts that you just, you just hired them because you knew how badly the schools needed somebody in the nurse's office to take care of the kids when they get hurt, the medications they get, especially if they're in special ed. Who decides to eliminate 90.9 full-time equivalent positions that take care of students' health? Do they know what they're doing? Do you, I, Mr. DeBecque, you said you don't know what's going on. Sometimes I don't know what's going on either. You've just announced all of the superintendents. Well, if you just gave back the VPs and the principals to the school, maybe you wouldn't need all those superintendents. I'm not sure what their job is. All I know is that when you're making these cuts, they hurt people. They're not just full-time equivalents. And if you think the teachers bleed, we bleed just as much. And what you're doing really though is putting the children in harm's way. And I want that fully clear and I'll hold you accountable for that. Thank you.
I'm Melinda Fenska, library assistant of 13 years at Loma Portal Elementary School. By the way, I'm a library assistant. I assist Ms. Deborah Ford, IMC resource librarian, by running a library, all by myself. What do I do every week? I do 19 storytimes, oversee circulation of at least over 800 items weekly, educate students K through foreign research and book selection, collaborate with staff to specialize programming to benefit achievement amongst our second language cusp and seminar students. This all on just 20 hours or less for many years a week. In other words, I'm a real bargain of an employee. Well, what does the IMC do for me? Well, it's taken me from being a children's literature lover to being able to run a full-time library service program on just part-time hours. It's taken me a technology dinosaur and made me able to train others in how to find, locate, use online services, and all the tools provided that the district's already paid for. The IMC has provided my site with the materials we could never afford, insect displays, solar systems, models, sets of books for the library and for the classroom. Weekly, the IMC staff provides, serves me and my school staff. They provide training for me, they provide my school with vast expertise that I could never attain, and they always deliver results on issues we need help with. We at Loma Portal are a California Reader Mental School and everyone a reader school and the library there was no small part of becoming a California distinguished school recently. In Section 48, you want to eliminate the IMC? That impacts more than textbooks. It impacts the equalization of all the schools in the district. Just as libraries equalize student achievements, the IMC equalizes all of our sites by giving them all equal access to a vast amount of resources they cannot otherwise attain. Sections 50 and 54 eliminates the staff that touch the students and coordinates all these materials into the people that matters most, the students and their personal achievements.
Okay, Ryan Brock, Polly Trailer, Joellen Archer, Tamara Hurley, and Mary Lyuva.
Good evening, board. My name is Ryan Brock. Address on file, I'm the vice principal here in the district and I'm here just to send home a couple of points I've made over this year a few different times. I believe I'm a bargain for you guys. I was a teacher with this district before becoming a vice principal and I actually make $11,000 less now. My hours are not restricted by an MOU that your board approved, meaning that you get my work hours anytime my cellphone rings. I'm available during banned events that will not happen if there isn't an administrator. I'm available for after-school detention that are outside of contract hours for teachers. I make sure that kids behave on the bus. I greet them in the morning when they get off and the bus drivers come and they talk to me about how the kids were or weren't safe. I make sure the school site has a safety plan. I make sure that teachers are where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be. If there is no vice principal at my school, then chances are there's going to have to be somebody else paid to stand duty during times when I would be doing it. In the, in the long run, I'm a bargain. If you get rid of me, you'll have to pay me a little bit more and you're going to lose a lot in the way of services for our district. I think the bottom line is that I don't, I don't think many people in this audience would choose to not pay their gas bill, but also go on a trip to Disneyland for a week. Okay? So I really want to send home that vice principals are not a luxury. We provide this district with a foundational service. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Polly Trailer and I am a parent at Barnard Mandarin Chinese Magnet School and I'm here today to oppose the proposed 10% across-the-board cuts in magnet funding. Magnet schools are a unique way of offering specialized curriculum to students. Magnet schools draw families to them because of their interest in seeking out specialized curriculum for their children. The success of these magnet schools hinge directly on their ability to successfully provide the specialized curriculum being sought. I fear that across-the-board cuts in magnet funding will severely affect the ability of magnet schools to provide sound education in their specialized areas. Cuts may even threaten the very essence of these magnet programs. Take Barnard Mandarin Chinese Magnet School for example. The 10% in our magnet funding could jeopardize the FTE for our Mandarin plus teacher. This position is critical to our program. This teacher is responsible for teaching second through sixth graders an hour of Mandarin instruction a day. Without this teacher, these students would not receive their language instruction and the school would fail at providing the specialized curriculum for which the student is seeking. Taking it one step further, over the summer, the Point Loma community fought hard to maintain the Mandarin program in our cluster. You graciously granted us that and I'm fearful that these programs put in place at Correa and at Point Loma High could be at risk if Barnard is handicapped by the lack of funding to provide adequate Mandarin instruction. Granting a school magnet status has also been a way of taking a failing school and making it a successful school. Again, take Barnard for example. Two years ago, our school was considered a failing school. It was on the chopping block. By making it a magnet school, it reinvigorated our school. In just two short years, the school's API scores have increased drastically and we were just named a California distinguished school. Done.
Thanks.
Hi, I am Tamara Hurley. My information is on file. I am appalled by the state budget reductions and I have worked diligently to it. All state legislators know how devastating these cuts have been and I urge everyone to contact his or her representatives and tell them to stop balancing the state budget on the backs of their youngest citizens and the future of our state, the children of California. However, I am equally dismayed at how the district has chosen to deal with this revenue loss. When more than 92% of the unrestricted revenues are used for employee salaries and benefits, it is clear to me that the only way to balance the budget without decimating student programs and services is to ask your employees to do more to help. The memorandums of understanding you signed with collective bargaining units did not do enough. If you are an employee of the district, I challenge you to contact your union representatives and tell them that it is more important for an elementary school to have an open library than for you to have a $10 medical copay. I challenge you to tell them that you are willing to take a salary reduction that doesn't impact student instructional days because you believe that student programs for both the at-risk and most gifted students are worth preserving, that having vice principals and health texts on campus is essential for student safety, and that providing an education in integration and race relations is important. This district is a ship listing in the water. The board has issued the employees the life vests, but the students are standing on the deck of the ships with nothing. As the ship takes on more water in the form of more budget cuts, the board is telling the district to dump student programs and services overboard to right the ship. Less this district and the students you were elected to educate go down like the Titanic, I stand here and challenge you and these collective bargaining units to go back to the table and save student programs and services. Make some space in your lifeboats and share a life vest. Prove to me and the rest of the public that this district really does put the students and not the employees first. Thank you.
Joellen Archer, you have my address on file. And I did vote for Catherine Nakamura's school board position because I live in her area. All right, I want you to look at the budget and it's real easy. They put FTEs. Well, FTEs are positions and all those positions are people. So I want you to know when you're doing cuts, you're eliminating people. And those people probably have children that go to schools because most of our members live within the San Diego Soul District. And when you cut or eliminate a job, it affects those kids at home besides at school. What I see you've done now from the last three school board meetings is you've created two classes of people. We have the teachers slash probationary teachers and we have the classified. And we don't want to hurt the teachers or the probationary ones that we may not need, but we can keep cutting the classified. Someday, we're not going to show up and the whole district is going to crash.
I bet she voted.
Yes, I did. I am wearing my voting shirt.
I am.
I'm Mary Lyuva. I should be a familiar face to you by now. I'm your only national board certified teacher librarian actually working as a secondary librarian. I understand you're considering not only eliminating our last district resource librarian, but the entire IMC staff, all library texts, and all library assistants. Deborah Ford oversees the elementary schools as their only librarian because all they have is library assistants. Without the library assistants, those libraries close. There are also no teacher librarians at Crawford, Farb, Montgomery, Marshall, Sarah, and Wilson. They only have tech twos. With the elimination of the four temporary teacher librarians, you can also add Bell, Challenger, Deportola, San Diego High, SCPA, Wangen High Memorial, and Millennial Tech. Oh, and Kearney will only have a tech next year also, since I've been accessed. Do you really expect the remaining teacher librarians to single-handedly distribute textbooks while split between two sites? Oh, and those 15 secondary schools that won't have a tech and have no librarians? I guess Deborah can do all of those? Harold Howe, former U.S. Commissioner of Education, said, "What a school thinks about its library is a measure of what it thinks about education." Before this board considers eliminating one more library position, I think it needs to consider exactly what it thinks about education. Thank you.
Okay, and Katie Anderson and Bruce McGur.
Hello, Katie Anderson. I'm here in the capacity of the Gate DAC chair for this year. And it looks like an emergency to me, looking at all of those cuts that you're going to have to figure out somehow. And I think I agree with Ms. O'Toole that it's time to go back to the table and figure this out a little bit differently. I'm concerned with line 17 on page one, line 43 and 61 on page two. If you take away the department and give the site Gate money to the sites, there's no guarantee that the money will be spent on Gate activities. The Tier Three is unrestricted now and the sites who got to keep their money this year, which wasn't many, didn't all spend it on Gate-related issues because of the cuts. If you keep the Gate site funds from the sites and keep the department, there's a much better chance that you will retain some semblance of accountability within the program. We went over this in February. We looked at these things in February and you guys agreed at that time. And now we're back here again. Many of the sites already have done without their site funds this year and taking away the clerks and the RTs, the resource teachers and the department, takes away the expense the clerks and the RTs, the resource teachers in the department, takes away the expectations of sites to file an annual gate plan and to be accountable at all. I live in Ocean Beach. I have two students that are seminar students, and my children are not in a bad place. We're in the Point Loma feeder pattern. We're lucky. But I also have a social conscience, and I know there are youngsters in this district who are not so lucky. I have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours in the last five years working for the good of all gifted students, especially for the gate cluster kids, because I had hoped that eventually, we would get this district to wake up and reinvest in these students. I've held that hope, and I'm going to take this time as the representative of the Gate DAC. I have just one page. I have held that hope in spite of continuing degradation of the district's financial and philosophical commitment to the department and to the program. I have held that hope despite the countless stories I hear from parents who have lost hope that the district will hold sites accountable and educate the principals about gifted needs, and despite hearing from parents who are apathetic as to the district's commitment and are disgusted by the lip service their sites give them regarding their supposed gate commitment. I have held that hope despite my own failed experience having to go up the chain of command for the good of the gate program at one of my sites. I have held that hope despite having to restart conversations with multiple deputy superintendents, area supervisors, chief SIOs, and gate department directors, and many board members. I've held the hope despite hearing about principals who deny by omission, seminar-identified students their identification letters because they don't want to lose those high CSD star scores to a school with a seminar program. But now, my hope is gone. This month, when you vote to cut the gate site funds, you take away the last three gate department clerks and the last two gate resource teachers for a total savings of $1 measly million. You're closing the book on a chapter that spans 60 years in San Diego Unified. You're taking away the last vestige of accountability and incentive that existed out at the sites to at a minimum pay lip service to the gate students with annual gate site plans and gate team leads and occasional gate meetings. I can't stand here as the other programs represented here can and quote, "Federal and state mandate laws are threatening you with lawsuits for ignoring these gate students and their needs." The only thing I can say is that people are planning to leave, and that my students will not be taking your state test next year, nor until you recommit to taking care of gate funding. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent, my name is Bruce McGur. I'm the director of the Administrators Association, San Diego Unified School District. I look at the added potential solutions list, and I'm a normally optimistic person. I see this not as a list of potential solutions. I see a list of potential problems. I think the theme on this new page of potential cuts is health and safety. I see a number of issues here. Of course, I'm here to represent the vice principals, who are members of my association. But there are other groups on here, the community service officers, CalSafe, health techs. All of those provide a safe and clean environment. There are also custodians and landscapers on here. The very group that you're trying so hard to protect, the teachers, are the ones that are going to be the most heavily impacted. They'll be the only ones left at the end of the day, along with perhaps the principal, to carry a tremendous load. And it's going to be a very difficult year for all of them. So, Mr. DeBeck, thank you for thinking of more global solutions across the board cuts. Thank you. Mrs. Nakamura, for being responsible last week and voting against the recent decision of the furloughs. We all have to start thinking about the big picture. I know contracts are difficult to negotiate, but I fear for this district. I can't imagine this district going into financial receivership, and I'm worried about that. Thank you.
So, we have some work to do that we need to go through tonight. We've got a challenge on our spreadsheet here of about close to $59 million in our updated projected deficit, and I think we need to do something that we've done several times before, which is to go through line by line and see how far we can get. Where we have three or more board members willing to support a certain cut, then we will take action on that and move us forward. Ms. Jackson?
I was going to ask about adding things to this particular list.
Uh huh.
Is there an opportunity for us to add things to this list?
Sure.
And I apologize, because I left my notes upstairs, and I'm trying to remember them from memory. But there were at least three other things. Number one, to rescind the recent raises that we gave to the finance department that would give us an additional $49,000.
Just go a little bit slowly there.
To rescind the recent raises to the finance department for $49,000. The other one was to look at the legal department. Right now, because of our, what we do, we outsource a lot to a lot of different legal people, but to reduce that down to a general counsel, a legal secretary, an administrative person. And we're getting most of our items by brief anyway, you know, professional briefs that we need. So, that would be a cost savings as well.
Do you have an estimate for that, Ms. Jackson?
We do not have an estimate back from that. Did we get one back, Mrs. Ward? I'm sorry.
I have it. I can get that in a few seconds.
Okay. And then, the other one I asked me to look into was asking our executive staff that we not, that we trim our executive salaries to $175,000 for a year across the board. And I think, I forgot, I think that information, Ms. Ward, is going to be, you know, we're looking into that as well. I don't know if we had that information yet or not. That we received it? Okay. Remember the numbers.
Mr. Stover, do you have a number for that?
Yeah, I have really both numbers. The salary reduction for those making $175,000 and more would be, with benefits, is $155,119. One-five-five-one-one-nine. And the number we were asked to calculate for the legal reduction, I have a gross number that would just include the reduction of employees.
Right.
That's 814,718. We did not calculate what the net would be after having to take that work outside.
Well, we're doing that. A number of items that we've been approving recently are for our contracted services, and so, we do, for the professional side of that, we do quite a bit of that. So, those were the three I know that I had already mentioned.
Okay. Do any board members have additional items that you want to put on the table?
Sure.
Uh huh. Mr. DeBeck.
Well, you know, it's pretty clear, and you heard from people in the community that feel this way, it's pretty clear that there has to be some kind of, I'll call it across-the-board financial impact on employees. Whether they like it or whether they don't, we basically are in a fiscal situation where, and as I remember, you know, I made a lot of enemies when I said this, but when you make across-the-board pay cuts, and we could argue about the way, the number we got the last time was that the solution of a 1% cut was equal to 9.4 million. And so, when, at that time, I remember taking what was a shortfall then and dividing and figuring out what the percentage was and saying, okay, if we backed out of that because things got better, we would be getting better on our percentage, and the percentage would drop. There were people that thought, well, you know, DeBeck wants a 10% pay cut. That's, we'll get mad at him. But the point was, it was to avoid exactly what we're doing now. So, you know, I've looked at this, and what's interesting is, on this sheet, which we got the most latest revised one on here, it shows that we have, that this, that's on the table right now is 109 positions, certificated positions, and 343 classified positions. That's what the total is, and yet, that doesn't include those ones that are magnet positions that are teachers as well. So, that, and I don't know how many times I've heard us say, well, we'll just cover our, you know, all the surplus teachers that we've kept on by retirements and by, you know, resignations or whatever. But they've been counted two or three times. I mean, we have 109 probationary plus teachers that we approved not to rescind last week, and we have 109 as a result of, if we did all these things, we still have 109 teachers to fit, and that's a wash. But even then, last year, we calculated, and the people brought it to us, that we were overstaffed by about 250 teachers. And the answer was, oh, that's okay. We'll solve that by putting them in the vacancies that occur when people resign or retire. So, we've been counting and counting and counting the same people over and over again as a solution. And so, the net result is, the only way we're going to solve this problem, if we add up all these things and pass them, is do exactly what all these people are saying we shouldn't do. And it puts us in a terrible emergency condition, which frankly, I think we ought to start talking about. Instead, we're saying, oh, no, let's suspend our reserves. Let's do all this stuff. You can't. We run out of money. We run out of money this year, and if you do this stuff, you're going to run out of income from people that drop out of the district and find other things to do, or you're going to lose ADA, or you, not only that, you may even lose test scores. I heard somebody say that. And then, you got the risk of all the people who are saying, oh, yeah, but besides that, you're violating Title I laws by all those things. You know, I'm not in a position where I believe these solutions are acceptable. Okay? And, you know, I didn't vote against, I didn't vote against the rescinding of the probationary teachers, but I probably should have, because, but I honestly believe that that number was already counted, and now, we've got another 109 to deal with.
Do you have a specific across-the-board?
So, yeah, I'm saying, maybe we ought to just say that we're in financial straits, like some of these folks said, and renegotiate with our employees.
Okay.
If that's possible. If it's not, then we'll all be down the tubes together. But I'd also add one more thing, and it never, we did fly. But I propose that if we are all that sincere about balancing the budget, this board ought to take a 50% pay cut.
Any others? Ms. Nakamura?
Yeah, I'd like to, yes, Mr. Stover, you appear to tell them that a 50% pay cut from the Board of Education would amount to almost nothing?
No, no. I wouldn't presume it. I just wanted to clarify one thing on the magnet teachers. Line 61, line six, just, I'm just, I don't know how often to jump up and clarify things for you or not, so you tell me whether you want me to or not. But line 61 does have the 42.8 resource teachers there. There are magnet and IB resource teachers in that. There are 30, I believe it's 34 in that number. So, they are included. That's the only.
Music teachers are in this group, too?
It didn't say that, because when it says, I'm just going to deal with that piece alone. The magnet says, "may result in reduction of FTE." This is line 24. May result in reduction of FTE, and yet, it does not show any FTE there, and you're saying, oh, well, that's okay, because I included it somewhere else.
No, sir. No, it shows 42.8 FTE.
Not in line 24, it doesn't.
Well, it's on line 61 on the second page.
But that's not the magnet cuts, and these people were down here talking about the magnet cuts affecting personnel. And you said so yourself within the document, that it may result in reduction in FTE, but then, you never specified how many there were, and you never even counted it in your summary that you gave us, which is this sheet, which has the difference between the FTEs and the classified. So, you basically, you know, I can't rely on the stuff I'm getting, I'll tell you the truth, because frankly, when did you get this? This morning? And I, you know, and if I ask any questions, I always get like, three days later, I get maybe some answer, but I will go to my list of questions that I submitted when I got this document, the spreadsheet the other day.
Right.
And every single one of them has in it, Human Resources, not every single one, but at least one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them say, "Human Resources, please respond." But I never got a resource, any response from Human Resources. They can't give me the information. They don't know.
There are, in line 61.
I'm just.
Okay. Ms. Nakamura?
Yeah, I agree with this, that this is just untenable, and I, it's, you know, I get back to the cause of this being a number of things, and one of which is that, you know, total tax receipts in California only go to, you know, 35% goes to education. Only 35%. The average across the country is 48%. You know, and tax receipts are down this year. Everybody up and down the state of California is fighting. Actually, in San Luis Obispo, the Board of Education got into a fistfight over this. It's impossible. This is an impossible, impossible situation, and while you may think that's cool, you know, it doesn't help matters at all. I don't think five furlough days was the way to go. I, you know, I disagree with that, but we are where we are, and I agree that going back and talking about pay cuts again, you know, a 1% or 2% pay cut could save these programs and could save the children, you know, the health of our children. You know, I agree with that cut, and I'm wondering, thank you. But, you know, I, none of these are acceptable. I mean, they come after our most vulnerable population, but I do have a proposal that's going to seem a little surreal, and that is all of the SI, or the area superintendents that we appointed, you know, nine of them and their staffs. What's the total cost of all of that? Mr. Stover?
I can get a quick.
Yeah. I mean, what's the total cost of that extra layer of administration? And I'm not one, in my entire time on the board, I've never, ever gone after that level. But I, you know, we could ask the high school principals to be the chief, you know, the area superintendents. We're going into a geographical format anyway, so ask the area, ask the high school principals to get some extra support. Give them some support, you know, throw a little extra money their way to make it possible, but ask them to do it that way.
You're talking about eliminating the administrative structure above the principals. Is that your proposal?
Take a look at it. At least take a look at the infrastructure. We have to, we still have to have a accountability report. We still have to have, there's a whole layer that we need in here. We still need the legal department, and I don't think that cutting off the legal department makes any sense, to be honest with you, because everybody's looking for money. If anything, we're going to have more lawsuits this year and more people coming after us because we're a deep pocket, at least people think. But, you know, I'm sorry that, you know, we had, and parents, I have to tell you, you're, we never get this right. We never get this right, and I admit, it's partially my fault, but you've all been so good. You know, we had the teachers come down, beg for their jobs, and then, the classified staff come down and beg for their jobs, and then, we come in last, because we don't, we love all those people. We love the principal, our principals, we love our teachers, we love our classified staff, but parents have got to stand up in this district and say, we need to have these programs, and we all have to talk about this together somehow. But we don't want to, you know, we don't want to go after, we don't want to lose teachers, we don't want to lose classified staff. There's nothing on this list that any parent wants. And, but I would take a look at that. I know that, you know, we just voted on that, but I would take a look at that layer of, for a year, if we're on an austerity program, I would take a look at it, where we just cut that out for, you know, a year or two. So, and I would, but talk about a pay cut. I mean, I can't.
Okay. The additional items that I'll just list again, from Ms. Jackson, rescind the raises to the finance staff for $49,000. Reduce the legal department for a cut of $814,000, but what's not factored in there would be the cost of then contracting out for that work. To cap at $175,000 salaries in the district for a savings of $155,000. Across-the-board salary cuts, 50%, yeah, we don't have a percentage.
Because 1% was 9.9.
No, I just solve the problem with the budget cuts and then divide by the number of dollars it takes, percentage-wise.
50% cuts to the board members.
That I did say.
Yeah, for a cut of $45,000. And then, eliminate the administrative layer above the principals at some amount that staff needs to calculate for.
Well, area superintendents.
Or areas.
The cost of the nine area superintendents themselves without staff is 1,529,280.
1 million...
1,529,280.
That's a few gate supplies.
Does that fill? Do you have a sense of whether that's with or without benefits?
It's with.
With benefits?
With benefits. What's the staff support on that? Do, can you get that number for us, for those offices? What's the staff support?
Internet connections.
That mine's lousy, too, but can you get that number?
Debbie's going upstairs.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay. All right. So to see how far we can get tonight, what I'm going to ask for are motions. You can make a motion for...
I think we should, thank you. We should use dots, because otherwise you go down the list and you don't, you know what I mean?
Okay, so...
Because you get a running total, and then you get to the bottom of something.
Well, we don't have dots, so...
Oh, I thought we could get dots. Mr. Reiner, do you have dots in your office?
But if we're talking about people choosing, are we talking about everybody coming up with the full amount?
We have a template similar to what we used last time.
Yeah.
Where we can show Xs and Vos, and we can pretty much create it any way you would like to create it. But we'd have to take that down and put up...
Yeah, why don't we put up on the screen?
But, you know, I'm not prepared for this. Can we take a break for half an hour, so we can sit down and think about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, honey, it's a lot of money, half an hour. I want an hour, but I'm going to ask for half an hour to take a break, and so we can individually just think about it.
Sure. 6:30.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I'll be down there, honey.
...
Where do we have a majority of votes? Well, we don't have to go through line by line if you don't want, but...
And is it possible to get it printed out?
Yeah, if we could get it printed out to this. Yeah. But what's our... how much have we saved so far? Have we added up?
Forty-six point five seven million.
Has three votes.
Has three votes. So we're at forty-six million and we need to get to fifty-nine. Okay. Yeah. Is there a way that we could get a printout for each of us? Okay. Board, so here's basically our options.
Do you want me to run upstairs? I could do it.
I can run.
Okay. So our options then for tonight, we're at sort of a preliminary. We're at forty-six and a half and we need to get to fifty-nine. So we've got another twelve and a half million dollars to go. We could spend time tonight going through, starting maybe where there are two votes, and see if we can get to a third. We can sit on this for a few days or a week and let staff take a look at this and come back to us. I guess, let me ask first the superintendent. Is your preference, Bill, that we try to work through to see if we can get more on that table tonight?
I would ask the trustees, could take a look at where you were trying to go, if you've got two votes.
Yeah.
Take a look and see if there's a third one interested, at least as an effort. And I would suggest, if we can't get much beyond what you have, is that we probably need a meeting, I would say a session by the end of the week. We can't afford to push it into next week because of the mechanical issues associated with balancing the budget and the trans note.
Okay. So in terms of meeting again this week, why don't we do a quick calendar check, see where we can get it? John, I know the weekend is always difficult for you. Is that...
Oh, yeah?
This weekend's impossible for folks. So what have we got? We've got tomorrow, we've got...
Does the X part, is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Yes, cut is what the yes is. There's double negatives here.
You got some time on Thursday?
Yeah, but I got, you know, I can't... Yeah, Thursday, right?
Can we get a quick...
I can only do it...
And John, you can only do it in the morning.
Thursday morning.
Catherine can't do Thursday morning.
Well, I got flexibility on Thursday.
Saturday morning.
Six AM Saturday.
Nine o'clock Saturday.
Oh, I was just kidding.
All right. So nine o'clock Saturday morning. Whatever, that's fine with me. Eight o'clock Saturday morning. Okay, sounds good to show.
How are we doing on the printout?
It's gonna take a couple minutes.
Oh, my God. What is this?
So we're... And then we're gonna meet eight o'clock Saturday morning. So when we get the printouts, we'll go through, we'll look at where there are two votes, see if there's anybody willing to put a third vote.
They had to take the document upstairs to print format it.
Okay.
And restructure a little bit so it would print.
Okay. All right, so another break, folks.
Okay, yeah.
Where do we have a majority of votes? Well, we don't have to go through line by line if you don't want, but...
And is it possible to get it printed out?
Yeah, if we could get it printed out to this. Yeah. But what's our...how much have we saved so far? Have we added up?
Forty-six point five six, five seven, forty-six point five seven million.
Okay.
Has three votes.
Has three votes. So we're at forty-six million and we need to get to fifty-nine. Okay. Yeah. Is there a way that we could get a printout for each of us? Okay.
Could email it to somebody.
Okay, board. So here's basically our options.
Do you want me to run upstairs? I could do it.
I can run.
Okay, so our options then for tonight, we're at, you know, sort of a preliminary. We're at forty-six and a half and we need to get to fifty-nine. So we've got another twelve and a half million dollars to go. We could spend time tonight going through, you know, starting maybe where there are two votes and see if we can get to a third. We can sit on this, you know, for a few days or a week and let staff, you know, take a look at this and come back to us. I guess, let me ask first the superintendent. Is your preference, Bill, that we try to work through to see if we can get more on that table tonight?
I would ask the trustees could take a look at where you were trying to go as if you've got two votes.
Yeah.
Take a look and see if there's a third one interested, at least as an effort. And I would suggest, and if we can't get much beyond what you have, is that we probably need a meeting, I would say a session by the end of the week. I just, we can't afford to push it into next week because of the mechanical issues associated with balancing the budget and the trans note.
Okay, so in terms of meeting again this week, why don't we do a quick calendar check, see where we can get it? John, I know the weekend is always difficult for you. Is that...
Oh, yeah?
This weekend's impossible for folks. So what do we got? We've got tomorrow, we've got...
Does the X part, is that a yes or a no?
Yes, cut is what the yes is. There's double negatives here.
You got some time on Thursday?
Yeah, but I got, you know, I can cancel some of it. Yeah, Thursday, right?
Can we get a quick...
I can only do it...
And John, you can only do it in the morning?
Thursday morning.
John, Catherine can't do Thursday morning.
Well, I got flexibility on Thursday.
Six AM Saturday.
Nine o'clock Saturday.
Oh, I was just kidding.
All right, so nine o'clock Saturday morning. All right, whatever, that's fine with me. Eight o'clock Saturday morning.
Sounds great to me.
Okay, sounds good to show.
How are we doing on the printout?
It's gonna take a couple minutes.
Oh, my God. What is this?
So we're...and then we're gonna meet eight o'clock Saturday morning. So why don't, when we get the printouts, we'll go through, we'll look at where there are two votes, see if there's anybody willing to put a third vote.
They had to take the document upstairs to print format it.
Okay.
And restructure a little bit so it would print.
Okay. All right, so another break, folks. Yes. And then my second question is, could we just, line item sixty-one, I don't know what all these positions are. I know, Phil, you started to talk a little bit about that. So we're talking about forty-two point six FTE reduction of non-classroom teaching positions. What are those non-classroom teaching?
The positions are magnet and IB programs, the vast majority, thirty-five. There are two point five-three, I'll tell you as far as we can drill down as finance, two point five-three are at the central office, four point oh-nine is at the school sites, thirty-five is magnet and IB programs.
Two point five-three FTE.
Okay, go to central office.
What was that after?
On my vote, it was, with the yellow, it was to take only a portion of that, primarily the non-magnet IB portion, and take the other part, which I was hoping was about a fourth of that, but it sounds like it's a little less.
That would leave you with about a little under eight.
Under eight.
Under eight.
Eight positions.
Yes.
So we're talking about?
Thirty-five are magnet and IB.
So about half a million instead of, instead of three point eight million. That doesn't really...
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions by board members before we turn the sheet in? Yeah, because that saves a whole lot of money.
Yeah, what salary?
The question on the, question on the small high school consolidation, because that was, what number was that? Number 56. We approved a small high school plan, and was this, and there was a scenario one, a scenario two, I don't recall. What does this additional 300,000?
This is, this is one of the items that we were, we were asked to include items from the prior lists from February that had not been approved, that had not been approved or acted on. You approved back in February a $300,000 reduction from the small high schools. That never happened. It never occurred. So you approved it, but it didn't happen, so we put it back on this list again.
But we, didn't we just earlier in the day approve it?
Yeah, but it wasn't $300,000 in savings from that plan, right? There was no savings in that plan.
I'm not familiar with that particular plan, so I don't know, I don't believe there was any, but...
There was no savings in what we, what we did, okay. Okay, so that's a problem.
Tony, is that correct? There were no savings in the plan?
The projected, let me back up. The plan for the small high schools looked at this whole notion of revenue generation through ADA with the projected increase in attendance at the small school sites of 2%. If you look at what we generated last year with the attendance incentive plan, there was a projection that William Pickering did for all of the high schools, because we were looking at school lunch and a couple of other things. I don't know if you all remember that conversation. But we used the data from that. It was 300,000 for the San Diego complex, 140,000 for the Crawford complex. If they did the 2% increase in ADA, that's what it would come out to be over the course of the year. So we're talking a total of $440,000 in revenue generation through ADA.
Have we had other schools that have achieved similar to, other high schools that have achieved a similar 2% increase? Yeah.
We've had, we've had this whole, well, last year there was this whole incentive program. I'm trying to think who was coordinating it last year, because I don't know all of the details of that. But that's what we used to kind of come up with our whole notion of looking at ADA and revenue generation, which is a novel approach to how do we deal with budgets instead of cutting.
So would you say Bill or Phil, is it, I mean, would it be safe to assume we could achieve that $300,000?
If the students come from private schools or from outside the district, certainly. If, if it's ADA and it's just increased attendance because they're doing things to, you know, track kids, then yes, you could do that too. Yeah. Either way.
Okay, so that's the 300,000 we're talking about. So just on my, okay, never mind, I'll mark my sheet here.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Each one of the, each one, I'm on line 68. Each one of the items that are suggested, that value, your mind doesn't show on which will be all the deficit. So I'm, I don't want to have a salary, because I say that I would take the percentage of the salary would be Canada. The amount of the deficit, if you divide that by 9.4 million, then that would be the percentage. So what I'm proposing here is all the deficits covered by that or all the remaining deficits.
Don't look at me, you got my vote already.
I'm just explaining it. All I really want is a value place there, and I think the value should be, the word all.
That's true.
Okay, I mean, it just part of the point of explanation, not for anything else.
So we can, we can put that on there, just put all of the remaining deficit, all. Okay, if there aren't any other questions the board members have, why don't we turn in our sheets?
So John, you wanted to remove your vote from 61, right?
What?
On line 61, you wanted to remove. Line 61.
You want.
Line 61, did you say you want?
Well, 61, I'm just pulling my vote, because it covers, I can read it.
Read the numbers that were included.
Okay, let's have a, so we're now at, it's 49, 49.9, so we're just about at 50. So, but that...
Yeah, I'd like to know which line items were added on.
What line items were added?
Well, mine, all my votes count.
Can you read the line items that went from two to three, or do you not, can't you tell?
Yeah. How do you tell you?
I think line 26 was probably added.
Yeah, 26 would be one.
Yeah, I voted for 25.
Another would be 20.
Right, that was my vote.
You voted for what?
That was my vote.
What, 20 or 26?
26.
Okay, so we, we added 20, we added 26.
Okay, on 17, there were, there were two votes. Did it stay that way? Okay, and 16, there were two votes that stayed that way? Okay, and then what else had two votes?
The next one would've been 26, and then went to three votes.
Yeah, 26.
Okay, 26, and that's the only other ones that had two on the first page.
At the very bottom, the title one.
Oh.
34.
34, did that stay at two?
No, that went to three.
Oh, went to three?
Yeah, I added, I added 34.
Okay. So that was added, 34. Okay. Next page. What about number 44?
I added that, so 44 is...
44 passed.
44 passed. I added on that.
What about 46 and 47?
46, I added.
You added 40, okay.
46 and 47.
46 and 47 got added.
There we go.
47 added.
56 got added. I added 56.
What about 52 had two votes?
56. What is it? What, 52?
Did 52 stay the same?
It's still two.
Still two, okay. And 56 was what?
I added that.
He added 56.
But I wanted to clarify on the, when someone's asking on adding on the 56, it was based on the idea of increased attendance rather than a reduction of clerical staff.
Yeah, so if we could change that wording.
So it wasn't a reduction in FTE, and I think that's important to know.
We'll change, change that for Saturday.
Okay, good, just to make clear about why you voted for it.
Okay.
And number 61 went down anyway. That leaves $9 million.
Yeah, we're at 50.
Nine million.
Well, as you can see, there are not very many items that are
I suppose we could use them.
Big items.
Oh, you know what we should do though, is we should discuss the yellows, because Amy, can you identify wherever a yellow is the difference maker, is the third vote? Okay, let's take them one at a time.
Can you give us a number?
One at a time. Line 24. Okay, and so Sheila, you're saying you'll cut that in half?
That's all.
So that would really be a $300,000 savings, not a $600,000 savings?
Right.
Right.
Currently.
So we have to put that back on the deficit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the school and library improvement, 5.7?
Yeah, so I approved 2 million of that, not 3.27 of that. So we need to take 1.27 off of there. 27.
So reducing it by 1.27, we cut.
It's the only ones I see, actually.
What was 26 again?
26 was the, oh, 26 we...
No, no, I mean, there was a, oh, the magnet, okay, I got that.
So now what's our total?
Down to 48.3.
48.3.
We're going in the wrong direction.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we're being honest. Were there, are there any other yellow clarifications that we needed?
I think that was the...
Okay.
All right, so we've got, there's 10 and a half to go.
Well, we still have the furlough and benefit savings, if we get those, that's 5 million.
Correct, yeah.
If you can close those.
So again, I'll just ask the, I'll ask my colleagues, do you want to try to push for that extra 10, or you could say that extra five, you know, depending on how confident we are on achieving those negotiated savings? Do we want to try to do that now? Do we want to come back Saturday morning?
I think Saturday morning, let's give our staff a chance to work on those and close that out, because we can't count on it until it's final.
Yeah.
The wishing ain't hoping.
I will mention...
If I could make a suggestion, I would suggest that you leave it as it is, but come back Saturday morning, because we need to clean it so fast.
Yeah.
I want to clean it up, make sure it's, everything's right.
Yeah.
Redo the spreadsheet, let you start fresh. And we can reorganize it a bit to show you the ones that you haven't approved. And this is a great start that will keep us very busy for the next three days, inputting those things.
Okay, and we'll put this on our website, share also, folks want to find this on our website, you can look at that. Okay, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming.